Welcome to the 2023, 2026 is it, John, 25 for goal setting session. So for those of you that weren't here with us last year, we did this on Zoom. And it was, but we had a really good segment and it was pretty amazing. Um, I took the opportunity and went over and reviewed what we did. As of course, I always carry a copy of the goals with me when I go out to talk to the public because people always want to know it. So I'm glad that everybody is here and I want to go ahead and turn it over to Stephen.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Good afternoon, everyone. How are you? Dry, and I'm here in presence and not on digital isolation like you were a couple of years ago. Um, my name is Stephen Bacon. I work with a firm called Country Group. We are a management consulting firm. Um, we were founded here in Portland area. We evolved since then to Southwater. Um, and we've been supporting organizations in the Pacific Northwest and around the country for the last 10 years. The responsibility that myself and my colleague Tracy has to work with individuals such as your colleagues, leaders, uh, organizations, cities, governments, uh, and other particular organizations, when you have to think through what comes next. So what is, uh, what is the future for the organization in this case? What is the future for the city over the course of the next two years? So we have the opportunity to spend the next day with you. Trying to help guide that conversation to a certain degree, um, but really tapping into the expertise that exists around this table, uh, to really define where our great city is going for the next few years. Um, I'll introduce Tracy and certainly I'll give you a little bit more background about myself. Um, but maybe we could go around the table because like in the first time, I introduced a bit of a disparage. You all know each other very well and I met a few of you, uh, and a lot that's been isolated at that. So, uh, I'm hoping that we could go around the table and you could just share a name and I will try my best to remember it. Uh, for the course of the next few days, but I'm sure we'll make it to each other better. Um, and I am going to make you do the really awkward thing that is tell me something kind of unique about yourself. Um, I'm not going to do the like, was your superhero accomplice, did you read all that? Although that's your thing, let's bounce here. Um, what I'd actually like to know is, uh, when your colleagues look around the table, when your peers look around the table, what do they see? Well, how do you feel like you present yourself to this organization, to this room? What do you bring to the table? Define that however you want. I'm a critical thinker. Uh, I can make pictures. I bring up good points. I'm the contrarian. But if there might be that you feel is relevant to this group, I'd just like to know how you identify yourself throughout the course of the next day. In addition to working, so it's not this superhero thing, at least that's all right. You want to see what I'm talking about? Um, let's just make it fair. I'm going around and I'll come in first and then I'll come back to myself.
Let's see, Tony Knuckle, and what do I bring to this team? Um, I think hopefully, uh, some leadership and the ability to help facilitate great conversations that get us to hopefully reach down good decisions together.
Adam Marl, um, just thinking about this space for me, this is where I participated in not only one as a high school. So talking about that, um, last hundred, I didn't. So I feel that my brand is a perspective of, um, and what it's like to be a young person in this community and trying to shape it in a way that's sustainable for future generations.
My vision, um, maybe a little bit of an outsider, not outsider, but maybe a newbie perspective, maybe the other device. Around the newest in positions in the room. So, um, I'm going to take advantage of that and try to remember what it was like. I did, four years ago, I did sit and watch almost every minute of the process that happened then. Never taken part in one, so I kind of bring in a newer perspective. Uh, especially I grew up here, work here, live here, uh, so what I bring is more than.
So what does that mean? What do you mean by more than?
Yeah, I like to think about like outcomes, what are we going to get to? So how are we going to get there and what's it going to look like, you know, in the future, five, 10 years from now?
So it's really, they're second, that's definitely a significant process as well. How's we actually get to that point, not just find Scott and achieve what he can, right? Okay, good. And, uh, I know your mistress and I know your rhythm, both are useful.
He wants to bring our name to the table, our name.
I know, I know, I should, I should have brought the sticky.
No, we have a name place.
Name's mine. Thank you, Sean. Yeah, okay. James Kellis, um, James, James Kellis, um, tell me, because I can hear your computer's low power. Um, what do you bring to the table in your opinion? What's your, uh, if you had to say what's your people power, what do you bring that if you're going to be gone, that this could realize me more perspective? Uh, what does that mean? Thanks, Sean.
Um, I'm Jim Dan, I appreciate, um, I think, uh, bring a little bit of humor because I like. Uh, my, I think a lot of, uh, police used to be very consecutive. I remember literally getting yelled at talking to HR about something like that. Uh, and I think at the time, I see a lot of value in assisted departments. The community sort of expects us to all coalesce pretty well. And, um, sort of all rise and fall together. So somebody in one department certainly having a struggle and maybe we're not vice versa, I just, I guess I try and bring on the perspective of us together.
And if it's a bridge building, being a bit of a, are you sort of, are you communication to the most 34 on the table for two days?
I think so. I think so that I could maybe even might even not, because what I, that's my perspective a lot that I try and bring out maybe more.
That's important. And again, I don't want anybody qualifying and we're always tempted to do that, right? I'm going to say this, but what if nobody agrees with me around the table? The reality is you're trying to bring that, that's the perspective you're attempting to put forward and at least you're saying it out loud and saying that this is what I'm trying to do. So we'll talk a little bit about expectations, but assuming that you're trying to bring something. Thank you.
I'm going to do it with my director and I can bring in just a dry sense of balance to Jim. It's great, man. I guess the thing I would think of is, yeah, uh, about.
They don't really work in departments.
Just, yeah, and, you know, this is my sixth day of workforce over a career. And here, but just haven't seen a lot with, when it's done things and, and of course, it would, it falls apart.
So in depth for you means, um, your, your team here, and I'm just going to refer to you as a team. And by my, your team here can rely on, you know, have a perspective from across various organizations and across time, across the city sector.
Yeah, thank you. I consider myself or any team considers me as a disruptive, troublemaker. I ask why, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. Channel, uh, and I have actually looked at things differently from that comfortable desk. Well, if I hear you've been doing it for 20 years, I ask why they do it this way. So that's just my perspective.
So a little bit of a counterbalance there. Guys, I've seen this six different times. It works this way. You're going to be the one saying, yeah, what about this way?
Yep.
All right, the contrarian. I know it's my future, but you're here.
Um, I'm Quilla, the Community Development Director. Based on our last year, I'm pretty good at filling the agendas for the city commission, uh, our recent planning mission. Uh, so kind of moving along with the land use tools that we have, or the land use legislation that we have.
What I have perspective. I mean, coming to the show, correct, I put together the agendas for it just to me, you, you see everything, you understand.
A lot of this comes through planning ends up in the city mission.
So something.
So we just fill out there.
Thank you. Well, the, uh, my director, um, everybody knows my fifth week.
It is chaos.
Um, welcome aboard. Thank you. Uh, this is my first city position, but I've been in IT for 25 plus years. So what I think I bring is, is IT leadership and experience from the outside city. Uh, so a lot of different things I've been, kind of back, I've been in a lot of different industries. This is definitely unique, but, uh, I bring that similar outside experience and thoughts. I'm a planning manager, never been at city council or in Donald, when I lived in Donald. So I have some area or industry experience.
What, um, and I'm going to bring in the spot, okay, I mean, was it a sense of service that brought you to this position? But what, what do you try?
Um, I've always enjoyed it. I, I've been at Vader for years and I've always enjoyed that. So, um, I've always thought a city position would be something I would enjoy. And so far it's been very interesting.
Do we live in interesting times, I think, is the statement over here?
Yeah.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Dana Webb, senior engineer for John Lewis, our fellow board director. Um, I might start by saying, John was always the, the dreamer. And then my, my feet comes in and I take that dream, like kind of work it through, get it kind of to that end goal. So I'm kind of, I don't come up with the idea, but if you give me the idea and where you want to be, that's kind of where my, my skill set is.
Tomorrow is going to be your dream. Meaning we're going to spend some time actually saying, that's all I'm good, that's where we want to head, that's important. But tomorrow's very much about, well, what are we going to actually do to get there? I mean, that's a little bit of what I'm hearing you say is perhaps what you'd love to do or what you would like to do. Welcome aboard again. Thanks for being here.
I'm Jake Wiley, I'm the City Reporter. Um, I can contribute, uh, despite my choose. Um, I can contribute uh, despite my two strengths, I'd say are kind of organizational trait. Um, and I needed like, like work stuff, my desk is kind of attached. It makes sense to me, um, and and facilitator. So, um, a lot of what I like to do, if you don't notice that I'm doing something that I can't write.
Do you mean uh, behind the scenes? Uh, you mean it's sort of, it just integrates well with already?
So in the, what I mean by facilitation is that focus doesn't become meat in whatever's going on. Cause that's how I support the, the city commission is, is I create the setting, the stage for them to do their work. Uh, so if I'm. Yeah, if there's some logistic or technical issue, that's, that's when something I'm not happy about.
Welcome, thanks for being here and thanks for supporting us.
Sean Frank McDonald, I'm the City Commission. Retired from a major American corporation. Current most pressing job is grandpa, my grandkids, number one commitment. Uh, what's my contribution here? I think I'm an outcome based thinker, based on years of management experience. And uh. Contribute some sarcastic humor now there. And uh, occasionally floggy to Rocky Smith's flogger. And they sit next to each other, so we have a dialogue.
I am so good at that. Uh, Rocky Smith, um, I think I'm a lifelong resident of our city, so I think I bring a strong connection to this community and its history and um. Tradition and um, the importance of this place.
I'm Jermaine, I'm the Communications Manager. I'd like to thank Mike for making me look like the bristles better for like two and a half months. I've got a couple of decades of communications experience though, so I'd like to thank, I bring that viewpoint to the table. Um, always kind of looking at that, that public perception, communication eye condition, which is sparkling away.
We don't know each other well enough for me to say it, and.
I'll, I'll take it as a joke.
Humility and grounded. And what do you like about radio? We're involved, Communications Director, or you know, Brian, so.
I was a Irish County prior.
Okay. Very good. Welcome aboard.
Hey.
I won't uh, I won't excuse what brought you here, that's the newest. Good to meet you, thank you.
Uh, Patrick Oils, HR Director. And I think I bring, I, my skill sets are around listening and just kind of keeping a safe space for people to kind of work. And explore ideas, so. Uh, I think that's probably what I, what I bring, good listener and keep these conversations going and get to a good spot.
Would you hit it in the HR, who was your, was right here?
Yeah, I, 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 I value relationships. I have a lot of empathy and awareness for people and. It's a good place for me to support people.
Welcome, thanks for being here.
Denise McGriff, Denise with a Y. It's my dad said, everybody has to be different. And um. I've been sitting here making a list and I have. I guess I'm like a couple of other people here, I'm a little bit of a non contrarian. Um, I don't like being put in a box, I like to be fluid, I, I, I'm open here one day, I'm like you over there. So I will just list a couple of things, so I'm community focused. I've also been here in a rated city for a very long time and uh, one of the reasons I ended up coming here has to do with its history. And, but I don't believe in uh, being stuck in the past, I believe that we use the past to inform our future. I'm uh, an advocate, uh, I feel empathetic, compassionate, I believe strongly in teamwork. I come at this position from a broad perspective of being citizen advocate. But I also come to this position as a person who has, I like to tell people I've been on both sides of counter. Uh, I'm a jack ball trades, I just found out the other day that I'm now responsible for making sure that the floor of the pool is now heated. And I almost told the person I'll be right over with my toolbox, but I decided to uh, refer him to Ken, so. A few other things like that. And I also had a friend call me yesterday and say, by the way, if my cat gets stuck in a tree, I'm calling you. I said, I'll be right over to dial you, so I have a variety of jobs that I currently do, but I have. And I'm happy to take them on. I feel that I bring, um, I do a lot of work, uh, that bringing people together as a facilitator in the community. And outside the community, I'm also fiercely protective of rating cities. So when I made my comment at the meeting uh, this week about, um, yes, we're gonna get this grant from somebody, but don't, they're gonna try to buy me off. Um, I also think I bring a youthful outlook and um, a lot of optimism. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg Williams, I'm the library director, the main thing I bring is I brought name tech. With one, my. It's going out. Right, yeah. Um, I think I bring an excellent, uh, uh, I'd like to bring a sense of humor uh, to the group. Uh, excellent pop culture background, they may want to talk music and then Paul Willing, that go off the corner, Jack Brower, maybe what John, where, where seventies punk is my main favorite, so. Keep my off. It looks so party, nevermind. It was the end of March. I feel like, oh, it's not, it's not, it's not, but it's not. Um. Uh, I think in a group study like this, if, if you've ever taken the DISC assessment, which I've taken several times, I'm a big fan of it, I'm a S, um, which focuses. I, I like to kind of try to identify common challenges, common problems that people are facing. Kind of identify what they're coming out of, and then figure out systems and frameworks to approach them and try to solve them or make it better. I'd like to listen out to the departments and you know, kind of get a feel for where they are and try to figure out, okay, Mike's got this problem, Mark's got this problem, Mike's got this problem. What's the common, I'll be there, I'm gonna do something that's gonna help us all move forward.
Thank you.
Tracy. Hello, everyone, I'm Tracy with a Y. I told everybody, I'm calling once you get to know me, so just keep that and like, circle it together, continue it. I am from the country group along with Stephen, I'm a senior consultant there. And for the purposes of these conversations, I help bring a skill set that brings visions down to actions and brings all voices to the table. So I look forward to hearing what you guys have to say over the next day and a half and coming out of this with a plan of. That direction that will take you guys for the next year.
Andrew, I'm sorry, briefly, but just uh, I think we'll give you a little bit of a sense of who you're stuck with next day and a half, um, that you don't already know. Um, by my background, I grew up in St. Louis, Missouri, uh, I'm just going east coast, I uh. Joined a Wall Street firm before they blew up the world. Um, and looked around with my wife one day in our 250 square foot apartment in Manhattan that we've been sharing for three years. And so there's gotta be more of this, isn't there? We've been missing each other, uh, kind of two shifts passing, night, hundred dollar weeks. And so we went on a website that no longer exists, but was called findyourspot.com. And it had a hundred question pages about all the things that you value in your life. And what you think your future home should be. My wife managed to get independent, and what it does is spit out a series of either small towns or cities or metropolitan areas that you should know too, because that fits with what's right for you. We both took it independently, we both got the metropolitan area in Portland, Oregon. So we both went on the website, went for, it's one of this was the Bureau of Tourism, and if this was crap, we had our tourist dollars. And it was not, it was legit, and so we booked the flight out here in 2008, you know, at New Sky Day in January, sitting downtown, looking around and saying, y'all are fine, it doesn't actually rain here. You're just trying to keep the rest of us out. And my wife came home one day and said, you know, this investment banking thing really stinks, I think I'm gonna be a physical therapist. They said, I support people heartily, held this one in that, she said, I had to go back to school, I said, I was afraid of that, where do you go? She said, Berkeley, California, I said, I was afraid of that. We packed our 250 square foot studio, got to Manhattan, moved to Berkeley, California, where my wife, who is much smarter than I will ever be, did a postdoc in science. And then did her doctorate in physical therapy, using neurological physical therapists, because she's since moved on from that, she did her doctorate in Wash U. We went back in the air for a residency and 10 years on, we had three kids, two dogs, and then each other and said, hey, how about that Portland thing we were gonna do? Should we do that now? And so we did, we moved up here and we've been here for the last six years. I tell you that because I don't live in Oregon City, I live in West Men, but I'm a neighbor. And so what I bring to the table is I care. I care about what happens to the future of this city, I care about the things that you care about and our residents of neighbor. And our neighbors should care. I also bring a belief that the people around this table are the best positioned to decide what the future of Oregon City is and should be. I have expertise in city government, I am not a Parks and Recreation, I'm a director, I'm certainly not a police officer. I am not a finance expert, despite my best night, but you all are. Public servants, you're here to serve the city, you have the best perspective on what's to follow. So I bring a belief in you the next day and a half. And I have a question, and she says you're a neighbor, see you come to success, fully forward with the next day and a half. Just to give you a little bit, yes, I'm sorry, I'm. I'm letting you. William, I'm sorry, I just didn't know that, my apologies. Give a little.
And for a kind of staff person, actually, he's a, he's a community member.
My apologies.
Um, I, I can take the honor of being one of the person in this forum, um. Uh, having. Pretty cool, but I, I think I won the, uh, won the, uh, the uh, season of the year award. Pretty different times. Um, pretty actively involved in this city, I love it a lot. But I would say what I bring is horrible philosopher attitude. Maybe that's because of my age, but I think about an aptitude for criminal solutions. I, I uh, I like to follow up philosophies with some, some ideas, so. Welcome, relax here. Then I enjoy the rest of my holidays. But if you're in the business, you know, that's all right, well, I would do that. Far as, you know, they love it, but it's a table. Thank you. Um, doing searching. Um, just to maybe set the stage for us, and cause if I don't, Tracy's gonna start to poke me with a stick, um, in terms of our time together. Uh, we try to split up our time, uh, for, across the course of the next couple of days. Today is about setting a shared understanding and getting out of our ways. The question is, where are we now? I've asked Tony and the team around the table to take a minute to, intentionally, more than a minute, to be clear. To intentionally make sure that we are all on the same page about where we stand. I guess the work that you took the time to do two years ago, and the information that you laid out to say this is what's important to us. So I wanna make sure that we spend the time figuring out where are we today? And then, yes, where are we going from here tomorrow? Will be really what is the most important things that we can do to bring that future up. So today will be a level setting and an opportunity to come together. Tomorrow will be an opportunity to plan what that looks like. Now, I do want to also acknowledge that this team, at least from a commission standpoint, I don't think has been fully together in a planning session, or at least that's the information that I got before. In the past, so I wanna make sure that we spend a few minutes coming together and getting to know each other, and beyond what we just talked about. You can call it an ice break, you can call it an opening activity, but I would like to understand a little bit of your communication style, like in the folks, and like you all to understand it from one another. So I've got a little bit of time to set us up for us to have a conversation. So we'll do that, we'll do some planning tomorrow, I'll be a small group, exercise. And really what we're trying to do is get you to a point after this conversation, where Tony and obviously the team around the table can actually figure out how to budget and make trade off discussion in competition, obviously, mission from folks around the table as to. What we are gonna be able to do as we report in the course of the next two years. Any questions on that? I just wanted to acknowledge that we've got work to do today, to set the stage, work to do tomorrow to plan. And then work to be on afterwards in a cycle of my communication. Okay. I'm just trying to talk a little bit about how we could review some of the words that you shared, and then I'm gonna get into a little bit of the esoteric philosophical, the aspirational. And try to break this down a little bit into the specific and the tangible. What I'd like to make sure we can deal with the course of today is have a conversation around vision and mission. Now, you have all laid that out in the past, you documented that, you've taught a lot, you've shared it, committed to the community. And yet, I'd like to know what that means to all of you as you come together two years on. Does that vision still resonate for you? Does that mission still mean this is how we're gonna get to the future state? Now, we're, we're not going to spend the time just to manage our execution, we're not gonna try to rewrite a vision or a mission that has been done and that is a long term activity we've already undertaken. But what we should, you know, is moving into a review of what's already been done to try to accomplish that vision that we have and that mission that we're set up to achieve. That time we spent today, what we'll be doing is listening for.
Recording in progress.
No pressure. What, um. Folks will be listening for is the themes that are coming out of the statements. And you've taken the time throughout various calls that you've put into place to actually identify some of those themes. Many of the conversations that already have something around the table confirms that you feel like these themes are absolutely directly correct. And when I'm talking about them, I mean things like DDI, like capital investment in sustainable or uh, infrastructure, like homelessness and a wraparound service states provision, like economic development. As raw themes that we need to engage in, that the commission needs to say, these are the pillars of our vision, we'll go our strategy going forward. But what some of my work output, how to become base friends around the table, appreciate is that's well and good, but what are we gonna actively do over the course of the next two years to get to that? And so tomorrow's conversation is not to get us to that. Now, there's a lot of words from me saying, I think this is where we're headed and I think that will make us successful over the course of the next two days. However. Like I told you, you're the experts in the whole room, but you tell me. What do you think is success, most likely, when we come back together at the end of the day tomorrow? I would give you one of the defining success in the top of the top. And I wrote that up to the table. What is it, that's.
I'll jump in, uh, I think that success uh, looks. Like the fact that we would have. Uh, additional implementation statements under the goals to move us forward. I think it's, as you stated, I think it's helpful for us to review what we have accomplished already, because I think that that helps set a foundation for moving forward again. I think we've done a lot of good work over the last two years, you know, given the um, extirinary circumstances that have affected not only our community, but the state. So that's kind of, kind of what I see, what I see again, going into the channel wall, I don't know if you're ready to do what needs to happen.
Uh, what is successful, like you did it in a day and a half to this time together? You didn't want to walk out of here. Yes. So I talked about. A reset. Um, and I mean a reset here. This is the first time this commission has been full for a while. Um, it's the first time I've allowed to have an ability to, to turn over the, the, the place to be. Getting together, moving next. About the crazy changes, um, and that's been the case for a while. Um. And a lot of, you know, like, there's been a lot of changes on the condition, so I, I wanna, I think, be able to revisit. Kind of like you said, our vision, because we've just passed the previous vision. Um, and a reset in going forward, um, as a new team essentially, um, that's step two, because we have a lot of steps that were a part of that last cycle. Uh. And I talked about with, with you, um. But I think mainly because we, we need to do this more often. Um, I don't think two years, every two years, this is, is enough for us to do this. I think we need to do it a couple of times a year. Um. Because we lose focus of this team and the ability to talk to each other in a place where we have time to do it. Without short sound bites and really have meetings and um. I think that's an issue that we need to deal with, and I think if we can do some of that, this will get that major step.
Thanks, Sean. All right. For instance, I was going through, you just heard me in two years of N does it, um. And it's close to, you know, how I remember the city, but I, I was going through everything that I go through, we all go through this every year, and I'm just sort of digesting this. But I think about how we're linked and sometimes I think that. People watch city mission meetings. But I think about how we're linked, and sometimes I think that people watch some commission meetings, and they think, oh, like, oh, these are not going to work. This generally the things we can't figure out on a day to day basis, those are the things that are coming up. This one slide is really interesting though, because generally, I'm gonna think about just these things, Oregon City is a place to live. On a five point scale, eighty-six percent of people said it's a place to live. They ranked Oregon City as a four of them, compared to fifty percent of minds are dead in the United States, fifty-two in the region. That's a significant difference, it's a place to raise children, Oregon City seventy-five percent, uh, United States sixty-two percent Northwest Region fifty-four. And I just sort of, uh, we're always in the weeds and the trees, you know, and sometimes we sort of forget the forest. Children, but for how people feel living here, and how they're raising kids here, people think very highly of the city. So I know we have to do these little things, and we gotta burn, we get your invite up, uh. Whatever, those are, those will really influence for how people feel about living in a community like this.
So it sounds, it sounds like success to you means let's make sure we're doing the things to achieve that for.
Yeah, we still have to stay hungry about so much of things, but while I'm staying hungry and working at once, and, and sort of, you know, really having robust conversations and process. You know, you know, keep these numbers big, but also remember, you can, you know, keep, keep, I just, I just feel like sometimes I will say that respect. People really good at living here, even comparing like Northwest and, which are, it's a place to, have people know, people feel about that.
So keep the big picture in mind.
Yeah, thank you.
If you want to, yes.
I hope we can really like that, with importance to unimportant, versus others, to my tip, and yeah, and in our case today, the insurance group and the staff are with each true process, commission, that we choose to, and yet that may be. We're looking at urgent for, but there may be a lot of important, big picture, not necessarily urgent things that we end up not spending the time on that we could, and what this goal set do is, it gives us the point of point. When we're buried in, could be by, could be police cars this week, uh, these people have a five hundred forty-four, like, um. When we're, we're buried now, we can still, you think, okay, we've got this big picture, we've got this long term, and it could be not long term necessarily, but we've got this longer term vision, these longer term goals. That's why we make sure we're dealing those with the urgency and, and not getting about, because you're gonna fall down in your own spot, so to set.
Right, from the, yeah. Make sure we're focusing on the important, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, it's a place we need to be created. This is your, this is your, this is your, outside, and there is not.
It is a big podcast, but before you beyond that, it's probably easy to, yes.
Yeah, agree with that, show up, the volume automation, man, and leave. You do, I have, I don't know. Uh, and the shots, uh, we, this city has done a lot of good. It's been building new police stations, it's built new facilities, done so much for city size, so it's a little place, it's not a big one, it's a little. Uh, and, um, we need to learn and celebrate our success. We do all of that. I'm really married. And we gotta start doing that, uh, because, uh, we take, we, 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 we tend to take, uh, take our success for granted. And people who are stuck in their jobs should be recognized what they do. I think the other thing is, we need to have a degree of professional respect. Um, there are people who are staff that have years of experience in what they've done, and it says that they have. And in that, there is an opportunity to, to risk the factors of staff for their professional abilities. And they bring forth how to do this. And the, the, the commission itself, they reflect to lead the community to grow the grass, not cut. And that's a big difference, uh, because I don't think people affect people to, to paint the walls and to fix the car. I think they're affected by our vision, and the staff is here to implement that vision, and they bring professionalism to the table to do that. And I think the third thing is, um. As we do the work that we do, it's important that we don't listen to one citizen and think that's a trend. One citizen will complain is not the whole world, it's only one citizen. And while they want to do this for everything, it doesn't matter. So we have to start listening to my two people that will decide the entire face.
So many, a lot of, uh, roles and responsibilities, we're hearing a lot of, um, perspective, which is what we said we were bringing to the table, so, thank you. And I, I think, uh, helping in the kitchen, which I thought was a worthy way to start. One last comment, just to be interested in time, anybody else? On the presentation, please.
Um, well, I think use the goals, uh, to help and guide my team, so what I would like to come out is a clear set of goals that gives us direction. And we know what to spend our time on and what to build the achievement. Right on the ground, so we can be really nice and, and hearing, so that's why I would like to see a lot of it, is there's clear set of goals where, you know, how to, I'm gonna direct my team and I'm gonna spend my time.
Sounds like, I hope tomorrow, it's a better course, but tomorrow, when we ask the music, we're not going to take it smarter, it's, that's answer to right. That's how, so, uh, I realize I'm very yourself, true, as I heard from a way, but. Uh, what I heard was, let's make sure we have some actual, actionable tactics, let's make sure we have some time to reset and come together the next day, and I hope we do that. Let's make sure we have a process going forward on how we actually engage with this. Let's keep the main mission, and I'm just remembering why we're here, let's key a step back from our day to day, let's celebrate the good, let's get us out of the direction, walking out of there. Is that fair? Is there anything you feel like you're way off base, and what's it something like? I'm gonna leave this up here for us for the next day and a half. Okay, so what does that actually look like? I didn't want to start with this, this is really the thing that we all get married in, Tracy's probably not looking at it, maybe it's just you're way off on that. However. Which is right. All right. A little bit of a conversation we just had, if you want to spend a few minutes going around the table, we're gonna do a little bit of communication styles conversation, I'll get into that. Like I said, I want to spend some time on the vision and vision that you've already established in my own conversation and understand how you all engage with those words that you committed to. You do have time for public comment, the mayor and the US group, uh, dinner, which is at one. Uh, and then we're gonna turn it over to Tony and staff, my team, um, to give us an update on commission goals. From there, we'll wrap up, we'll talk about how, what we did with the status update from the, uh, city manager, and his team will actually lead us into the work we're doing tomorrow, so there's some connected. Law consulting, our guys just yell at me when I do it, a lot of connected tissue between us two is the idea of getting us from day to the day one, day two. That's where we're at, and you've seen the set at the time, I mean, I'm not sure, and you, questions, concerns about that, other than see your timing comes terrible. Now, that said, I appreciate that mission and success, I think we should have some expectations of each other, and I think that's worth putting out on the table and asking if you can commit to these things, and some of them you've already touched on, so here's some words I would, I'm curious if they resonate with you. I assume positive intent. I think you have all committed your careers, your professional time, the some case you're volunteering your time to make this city a better place. I assume that necessarily requires good intent whenever you speed up, share your thoughts, advocate for a position or against a position. I hope that we will make space for all of us. I will invite all of you to communicate and to share throughout the course of this, and I will know this when you're not, and I wouldn't like to, I don't ask you, I don't force you, but please remember that your voice matters at this table, there's a reason. I didn't ask all of you and the city staff and the commission to not sit at this table together. As you do, I want to make your step away, I'm sure you will do that, I ask you to do that, I expect to be given a ticket, I do not expect everybody will get exactly what they want. It's a compromise, and this is an ongoing process to open. I believe you will embrace your role, I do believe, from the things that have been shared, that, yes, I believe the commission has been elected to set a vision and to enable city staff to actually go out and accomplish that, to make this city a better place. I agree with you on the process, and I recognize that, you know, laptops are up, laptops are available, and the world's fully communicative, and our families are wondering what you're doing, but you're here. I just want to engage with it. You want to, you know, I'm not gonna stop you, you want to be on the, in the face, your time, you're just wasting your time, regardless, in your, in your, and by the way, I'll ask you to, we're wrong, we said take advantage of the time together. You have an opportunity to build a, a team here across all the different roles and responsibilities you have in the city. These are my expectations, these are what I will have coming up here. Fair, way off, you think I'm like, have I offended you one day, one hour or two, like, way off? Are there any additions to this, did I miss anything? What's my vision, you know, show that, you have. I'll take a minute to decide, but we all agree to this. You agree that this is how we'll engage for the next day and a half, and there's one of the hard times to do that. Fortunately. I figured I missed it out, and you have a chance. But then you have more, I got a kind of, it's basically, yeah, again, you have an expectation, we would agree. I have an expectation, not, uh, blocking, but, uh, I'm just pretending that was, that was the right lesson. Um, if there are other expectations you can have, actually go across, communication breaks them, one of your, those are cautious, that's all. Okay. I mean, that term, but yeah, it's the thing, it's, it's the icebreaker thing, it's the, it's the time together. Here's what I'd like to do. When I was, about ten years now, I was in the Bay Area, so it's gone on at least ten, twelve years ago, uh, I was in a class, and there was a class to get certified in an emotional intelligence certification, it's called the Emotional Social Confidence Inventory, and it's all about how we get emotional intelligence in the workplace, that's not really. However, I was in a room with a room of professors from Georgia Tech. Remember this very clearly, we're having a conversation about, oh, I, uh, in my practice, in the consulting work, I do, I use the Mark Briggs, very clearly. Is anybody not familiar with Mark Briggs, by the way, I mean, by now, yeah, I think we all are, you will, yeah. I put that on the table, and you know, they, they went against, stopped. He's the Mark Briggs, why? Don't you know that's been proven in doubt, don't you know that apparently reliable is an instrument? You want upset academics, tell them they're reliable and included, I'm actually, they've been too. And they looked at me, and said, why would you use that in your practice? I said, I think my goal is to drive a conversation with professionals who have a vision for where they want to go. I use it because it puts something on the table for people to react to, and more importantly, it gets them to understand each other in a different way. She said, you do that just by having four different letters, really, you think that's helpful, so I said, no, there's actually a little bit more of a, kind of, you know, pseudoscience that you plan to be. There's actually an element of how we are here to others. What we rely on as a core part of our personality, what we present to the world, and also, and perhaps more importantly, what we keep for ourselves. And all of those fundamental misunderstandings when we're communicating with one each other, one another, is that we're taking what we see to be true. When in reality, there's at least half of us in this room who you will never see the real side of our personality. Because we are in trouble, and maybe stress ourselves. Interrogation, not anything to do with dialogue, like the last night, like a little party, it has to do with where your energy comes from and how you present yourself to the world. And so with my eyes in the room, I will never see the true you, as you say. So I spent a couple of minutes talking about that as a group, because I believe it's worthwhile to know each other in that context just a little bit better. I think that's worth a use of time to, yeah. Make a step back, reset, and spend a little bit of time together, getting to know each other. So, is anybody, is anybody not familiar with the Mark Briggs, and it's okay if you're not, yes. I think by now, it's very normal. So preference, a series of preferences in this law, or that, and you're talking about, you know, some energy, talks about helping engage, I mean, the information, helping take information in, not about how we make decisions, and the presentation we have, or preference we have, or whether or not we are preference to take information in or to make decisions with the information that we have. And you combine all of those into a variety of different four letter conditions, you get sixteen different quote unquote personalities types, which we like to write up. Summary statements about, you're not gonna change it, you are the ski type, but, okay, whatever. But what does that actually mean about how we engage with one another, that's what I. But just to make sure we're on the same page for all of this, extroversion and introversion, there's a lot of words there, but what it effectively means is how you engage with the outside of the world and what that does to your energy lives. Here's the example I can give you. I, for a year, I spent time teaching business class, uh, primarily in the book of study, and I would spend eight hours a day, five days a week, three days a week, traveling around the world, teaching people business classes, and I'd be in this room with you. And at the end of the day, I didn't ever really have that thing to turn and say, hey, you're sticking around here all the time, you wanna go grab a beer, do we go grab a drink, you wanna catch up, and what was that? Absolutely not. That is the last thing I ever wanted to do, and it has something to do with you, and I need to know that, however, what I need to do is I need to go back to my, when I need to reach out, I need to come back into myself. Because if I'm asked you, based on just the few minutes we've had together, am I an extrovert or introvert, how many of you would have said introvert? Be honest. Yeah, yeah, it's all fair, you're seeing a little bit, fine. Reality, I, I am as far off the chart introvert as they get. It's like thirty plus, thirty minus, I'm a thirty plus on the line. Doesn't that, well, enjoy this, another conversation, you, maybe something at the end of the day today, I'm gonna go home, I'm gonna crash, have to build up my reserves to get back to you tomorrow. So engagement with the world and the energy that we bring, it also talks about what we should go to the ex, external world, what we see about the, part two, let's talk about engaging with information. Um, the chief, correct, chief just referenced the survey that you got, he clearly has gone through that, he's internalizing information, he's probably thought about sequentially, he's known about some data points that are meaningful to him. He has a way of taking data, I'm not saying you're an S versus a M, but there are ways that we take in information and therefore present it to one another, but we should know that about each other. There are, to take it in, in a paper, take sure you're not raw, and that concept, and they think about themes as opposed to individual data points, you got a lot of words together, that's your S and your N. Like, your T, your J, has everything to do with how you make decisions. Do you make decisions up here, or do you make decisions down here? And there's a, a preference where there's a tendency to say, you only do anything to here, what to do here? Because there's a ton of love here, just there is something down here. So that's how we make decisions, do you make it from a cerebral standpoint or from an emotional standpoint that look towards others? And finally, how do you approach life, and this is the one that is most important and sometimes the hardest to get. The easiest way to think about it is our Js, are the people that take in the information, they make the decision, they say, no, that's, that's fine, that's all wrong. There's a, or Ps, which is that, I take their information, and I make the decision, and I leave. I reserve the right to change my mind, I reserve the right to take in more data, and I reserve the right to continue on in this decision making process. And I reserve the right to continue on in this decision-making process. Again, neither for long, but you should go, you're working with it. Because if you're taking a decision, some of those, in this case, P, don't waste the product. They want more data, they want more information, and you're not making a decision, you want, they're just gonna do a jet. You should run something that comes down, you barely need much information, except. If you provide it to them. I think more than, um, I don't know. I think you probably don't even know most of those things, but I thought it was more about us reviewing those. As I was talking through these, and I had lots of the individual dichotomies, but because we know a little bit about this closer, you may have already taken the first break. Do you know and kind of place yourself kind of a little bit along those spectrums already? You know sort of where you are, you're a data sequential thinker, you're a data pitcher person, you're the decision maker, you keep data open. You're going far on low to up. Hearing you guys say that. Today, I haven't really been following you guys since this. I just want to spend a little bit of time breaking this up. If any of you, I am probably just gonna have a conversation with you about this. So instead of moving you around the world in different dichotomies, what I'd like to know is, how many of you self-identify as that extroverted energy? How many of you enjoy and get energy from engagement with others? Okay. So, okay, that's the best thing too. And if I went with I, it's sort of like, skip a little bit of that, those are. Part of it. Okay, great. So, for my Ps, can you talk a little bit about how you all have different work in mind? So maybe just talk about how you work with your colleagues, your peers, or people around this table? What does it feel like for people to work with your colleagues and peers? Anybody worried about this, this is how I work with them, so?
You said you worked at Aspen, what attracted you to the city? Part of it, one of the things I actually did was, I was working remotely before, and as much as I thought I loved to be able to just roll into my office, wake up a minute before the day and roll in the jammies, shockingly, I just didn't even around people. So I'm a lot of myself, instead of like, I'm around people again, and certified email, I'm gonna go to their office and talk something out because that frequent interaction, I find it more beneficial and I can get more out of a problem when I just talk it out with somebody than sitting in and applying an email on that.
And I think you would say if there was a little power meter over your head, that after you've had that conversation, it's gotten tipped up a little bit, it got some energy out of that, yeah. Any others, how does, to work environment feel like, for how you guys are engaging more like?
And that's the thing, this again, I still have the pressure, the pressure of nuts. He's an earplug budget.
Where are mine?
Mine's nine, so here you go.
Are you, are you, do you have any more of the introversion or some of your stuff?
Well, I think when you talk about where your energy comes from, I would say probably slightly on the high, um, slum. I mean, yeah, I, I'm more like, like, uh, Jerry. Second, you got it. I mean, I'm a much better dude, uh, I mean, it's just, if you don't mind, it's, it's not quiet, it's not, I mean, the team is not quiet. We'll just go talk to somebody if it's into you. I also, I'd say it's watching you go with it, you got this. But it's a time where we can shut our doors and just, yeah, you know, this last four weeks have been, I get the offer, right? The tide has bounced, just be prepared. It's like, I can judge.
Can I, uh, just, oh, please.
It's the energy thing, at least for me. I mean, you know, I, I, I remember I'm talking public all day long and talking to thirty staff members and I always try to explain to my wife, I'll come home after, you know, I'm stuck at the office and she, she's actually training top. And I just, I, so I think that's what I always try to tell people is, you know, I'm more really more engaging, listening and being present and be personable and really go in relationships, but it does take, I mean, that really, it really is work, you know?
Personal with your life or your profession, I'm sorry?
You don't know.
It's not. So raise your hand if you're not. But around the table, Xerox. Remember that these are the people who are going to be tired after a long day of conversations and they need no offense. If they are sports, if they are equipped with you, maybe you know, it's an energy. Raise your hand if you're reading. These are your people who you should be coming to and having a conversation if you can, because they're gonna get a lot out of this. All right, uh, I'm next. I'm gonna picture real quick, just since it's a long one. I gotta look at that picture. Take everybody to seat. Hey, for my essence, for my ends, or anybody, tell me, what did you see? Tell me, anyone on the board?
It's like, I don't know.
Okay, so I saw, I saw a result. So you saw a result, somebody just started, what else? I mean, is there anything else?
Wordplay.
Oh, the wordplay, we got play.
Some word, wordplay. Yeah, similar for B instead, and at the end of life, it'd say, can't speak to the plane. Uh, so it was just, it was nothing off.
It wasn't like you were looking for something specific, you looked at it and it wasn't like you said.
There is a wooden toy over.
Fire. There was a wooden toy over a fire. Yeah. What else happened there? So we're pulling all the strings, we're pulling all the strings, there's, oh, so there was some sort of thematic concept of like a puppeteer pulling strings. So we got people who noticed words, people who noticed very specific descriptions, people who noticed sort of a resemblance of a person and started putting it in context. Some people who thought about the map and what I was actually being communicated, or those are S and your Ns. What they're doing is they're taking in information either in sequential detailed way, those are Ss. Or your Ns are looking at it and saying, for me, when my N turns on, that's the decision, it is kind of creating the loss, right? But I don't know, it's the color scheme, it's the offsetter, the, yeah, the, the proportion between the pot and the pot. There's just something about that, like thematic concept taking in, and I can't tell you the specifics behind it, but I'm talking about kind of an actual. Right, so S versus N, taking in information in sequential detail, taking it informatically, those are our Ns. Behind them already, does that start to fit with your S or your N, your identification of self? S, that's sequential, and that's thematic. Who are my Ss in the room? Okay, so we can, so that I'm gonna rest identifying Mark's ends. All right, so we got a bunch of bold and strong, like, we're taking the G minus city men, who just raised his hands, so he's S. He's interested in data and information, taking it in sequentially and often making decisions with that concept in mind. Dispersing information that way. Your Ns, raise your hand. Right, these are the people who come to them with all a bunch of information, all a bunch of bullet points, all a bunch of data, they can work at and be like, so I actually, so you just give me the, like, people who post notes, give me the details, like, there's got something to communicate in here. It's a great condition, it's only looking for that. That's, that's not bad, got just communication style, that's the person. All right, next, yeah, um, you went to a party, friend arrives, you look at him, you see what he's wearing, you say, oh my gosh, to yourselves. Make sure. What do you say to them in that situation or what do you do in that situation? Anybody on the board?
Well, that's my choice.
Can you say that out loud?
In the back. It's a lot of work.
That's a good fact. Well. Anybody done swallowing now?
Smile.
It depends. Maybe, it depends if somebody, if somebody had, if it was somebody and there was a, let's say that I had walked up to a person and said, by the way, did you know that your zipper was down? Very quiet, very quietly took it aside, very quietly.
Good.
So I would, I would, I would not want somebody wandering around a room with that type of situation.
The mayor is, she would not want somebody to wander around in that situation. Not because you're in a sound, you're like, and the other zipper down, zippers belong up, you know? But what she's saying is, I don't want them to be in that situation. I'm guessing you're saying is, you don't want them to feel embarrassed.
Yeah, because like, if they find out later on, like, why, you know, spinach in the tea, why didn't somebody tell them?
Yeah, right. And zippers belong up. T or? What do you, seriously, what is zipper? T. Nothing here, nothing here. Right, T versus that. Now, this is also how you make decisions. So the decision about whether to say something or not, whether to let them be or not, how would you say something? That's, you made a decision based on a cerebral one of you or a heart one of you. And the last one, J and E, you're all friends, you're gonna celebrate a man's birthday. I'm not even good at this because this is more of a prep exercise, but what you did, our Js, those who are more prone to putting it in place and making the decision, you know what they say? All right. We have a blank venue, we got to figure out what it's gonna be, we gotta get the invites, how many, your presence, we're gonna wrap the present in blue paper. Everybody's gonna be here at seven o'clock, when you get there by seven or five, we're gonna have a good time. Got it? Good, next. I think you're saying. I don't know. I don't know. Can you do it? Yeah, I'd like to. Uh, we're wrapping, no, she likes red. Okay, we're going red. Wait, and red will look in the bar? Right, and there's your views. Again, that can sound indecisive, it's not, it wants to go into more information and wants to understand all their options. The J is more interested in saying, hey, I'm long, I'm long on this thing. So my outcome based people, who raise their hand, I'm getting J resonance. To be wrong, but it would hold if you consider yourself more than half of the person, you're gonna consider yourself more than. You're still, okay? So, a lot to kind of tell them what you're more than, but why does it make sense to have your four letters? It has to do with how they interact with one another. So, what I'd like you to do is, you're drawing up these papers already, just write down your four letters, if you're good. And yeah, if it is written down, we're gonna do some writing that you're asking about here. It's like one was one. Okay, so here's why my friends from Georgia Tech made this a little bit of what the point is here. Carl, obviously the psychotherapist, psychotherapist banker, um, his argument was that there are two effective things to our personality. We take in information and we make decisions. And his argument was that taking in information is about S and H, right, we talk. Making decisions is about T or F. And energy is where we direct our energy towards our E and our I is what we focus our energy on. And he also believed that between all those four things, S and T, F, we actually access those parts of our personality in a very specific order. So you're talking about, if you are a J, how many of you are a J in the room? Yeah. If you are a J, what that means is, according to Young's research and Meyerson Briggs's work, mother and daughter, you are more likely to extrovert, show off, show the world your judging function. Your judging function is your T or your F. Okay, so here's how I'll do it to that. If you are a J, write a script under your T or your F that says E. If you are a J, a P, write an E under your T or your N. There's also, if you are a P, you are more likely to show the world your data intake progress. Makes sense, right? We're talking about a J is, you make a decision, you're still making that decision. The P, I take in more information, you know, you take in more information. So for a P, if you have a P at the end of your four letters, write an E under your S or your N. Everybody can so far. You gotta J right around the T or the N. Your P right around the N, yes. What you've just done is identify the part of your personality that you show to the world. You've extroverted that part of your life. You, now, I can get that sometimes on my Myers-Briggs because I, I know the question with my house myself, but in the most part, that's TJ, it's pretty much what I think. So, if I'm J, means that what you see of me, my extroverted function, is someone who makes decisions, first and foremost, decision maker. But I agree with you. Well, I'm emotional intelligence, because I knew like, it's fair. But the reality is, you're seeing someone who makes cerebral decisions, you mean the information on the city, based on. How for our Ps in the realm, what you're seeing about them, they're showing how they take in information. So if you are an E or your colleague is an E, and that's why I asked you to raise your hand, so you can see who's who. You're constantly seeing them taking information, that's what they're going to do. Okay? The inverse becomes strict, so that means they, the other function is introverted. And it's the one who didn't write an E on, on these two middle pair, right, on, under it. So for me, I can say, I wrote an E under my T, that's where I fit the word. I wrote an O under my S, so I keep to myself. What I don't see of me, that I introvert, is the fact that I'm constantly thinking for about days is coming in and I'm constantly reading the room and looking at all of them and trying to understand what's happening and what I should be learning about that and what I need to do to make sure that we're all following along. And so the way I actually show this sometimes, do I ever say phrases like, ooh, let me take a step? That's me, we're taking in the information and then being ready to bring it to the T. You don't see that, I keep it to myself, tell is the, oh, not be standard. So your introverted function is what you keep to yourself, provides that. Are we, are we highly in the N? Okay, so, again, you're showing something to the world and you're keeping something to yourself. This is a little more complicated. Where do you focus your energy? Are you an E or are you an I? If you are an I, wherever you wrote that subscript I, write a one. If you are an E, wherever you wrote that E, write a one above it. That is your dominant function. That means that when you engage with somebody else or engage in a situation, you are calling on that part of your personality first. I have an I S TJ. That means whenever I walk into a situation, I am immediately going to data collection. So here's a top, I walked around the room, I shook your hands, I spent a little bit of time on the front, wanted to hear about what your powers are. I went this way around the room, was trying to engage and ask you a couple of questions. That was my data collection mode, going in too intentional, but, however, unless it was in this setting, I would never see that, I would be the one sitting in the corner, just watching and taking it. And I'm very curious, I hear about it. But for me, my dominant function also happens to be introverted. If you are an E, your dominant function is an extrovert. So for extroverts in the room, we see you. You show us who you truly are. That's what, that's what I'm, it just means that we're never in our eyes, we're not showing ourselves to them. Now, the relevant, I definitely think your, your secondary function, it'd be opposite. So whatever, then put a one over, put a two over that, that's what you call on second. And then we follow this all parts of our personality. So if you were an S, you still use your N, your T, use billiards, your F. Your opposite, it falls through and talking about it all this. All I want you to know is that there are parts of your personality that you call on regularly and that you show the world. Your opposite holds true and not in the opposite. All I want you to know is that there are parts of your personality that you call on regularly and that you show the world that you don't. So why? Who cares about all this? I'm trying to tell you that there are things that are happening around this table, in convention meetings, in conversation with city staff, that are simultaneously exactly what people want you to see. And they're being completely straightforward with you. Or through no intent of their own, they're not killing you in all their hearts. That is not intentional. Your extroverts are not trying to be out of their comfort days, trying to make you see them. It's just who they are. You're introverts, trying to hold them back. They're not trying to prevent you from seeing it. It's just who they are. So remember, taking nothing else away, all the words here, introverted types, you, their dominant function to themselves. Extroverted types, don't you, their dominant function. If you are an introvert, we will never see the core of your personality. And you should never expect to see the core of the personality of your colleagues who are introverts. That's okay, yeah. But here. So you do what you can. That's just who you are. So I bring all of this up to you because I believe that you will all interact in various settings, whether it's at a convention, whether it's at a convention city staff, whether it's a city staff together. The reality is, you're all bringing yourselves to the table. You're all a certain type of, you're a very extrovert and through no fault of your own, you're actually showing who you truly are, or at least something that. And it's worth knowing that by your colleagues, because even if you don't know that, it may not be assumed that it's an enemy. A lot on psych metrics and M T I for all twenty minutes of, but I want you to remember that you just got the time to put the there, have a conversation with each other. No, I see me, I'm for the best, I'm just saying, I'm me. There you go. So, okay. Oh, not the convention. Almost everyone, the conversation. Any questions on your graph for us? In Myers-Briggs, they're gonna be. And the real Myers-Briggs, not for like, they're just all there.
Is there a good way to try and frame that introvert out? And, and talk to them to get a better idea of what we're pulling in.
Introverts, as much as we said, they don't get their energy from interaction. They actually are more comfortable in a small group setting. So you don't actually expect my eyes as much as I'm trying to draw you out. There's stuff that you draw a lot on the table, I know. Uh, but if you can get an introvert one on one, and you can engage with them in a way that recognizes what really is in there, does it really tell you? But we're not gonna see all this. You can get there. Kind of like you have to talk to the children. No questions? Comments? Thoughts? So you're gonna have ninety minutes. You should have a break now. Can I come back for a question here? Yeah, okay. Guys, I don't think you have a stop. Can we do it in a room? Fifteen?
Um, let's do it. We're in the beginning of some time stuff.
All right, let's take your ten minute break. Okay, uh, Jacob's gonna have ten minutes on the clock. And we, when that makes zero, I'm forever, we'll just talk to each other again. Back to your job. Okay. That was a lot of that, but that was ice breaking. That was getting to know each other. That was a juicy level setting, right? If you want to offer any questions, comments, thoughts, or suggestions that anybody has that you want to put on the table before we get going, it's not hard. From here, we're starting to get into the stuff, so. I'm gonna try to bring the right about each.
I thought it was interesting that you chose that particular method.
Oh, oh, no.
It's just, I find that great, it's weird.
Weird, I mean.
I don't think it actually reflects anybody.
Oh, you said, okay. You and I were just talking.
Yeah.
Uh, the same.
Agree. We always agree.
I say we've gone with the next story.
It's one of those, it's your, for me, it's one of those things that puts people in boxes. And we were just kind of talking about it and I didn't write down half of it because it was just, I was, I was getting lost in it.
Very good.
Yeah. My favorite statement about Myers-Briggs was for me, independence.
Yeah, the, uh, the idea there, and I'm, I'm not a bad, but I have such a feeling. No, it's great. I, I'm not Myers-Briggs defender. I will say, all of those parts of your personality have a if you know the method, um, some of them are more dominant, but all of them have it, which I think is in the best.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thing about it, though, is actually managing people or interacting with public or interacting with each other, especially if I'm situated with things that are all like that. And so maybe, that's like, is everybody be exactly what it is? But it's more of a self confidentiality, especially a conversation that I have, it can be very different than the conversations I have with Brad, in the actual session for a reason, and they are between Brad and Ross, I mean. Yeah, you get, you got people to put into it, but there, there, you can see, as I said, there are good situations where when things are pushing, ramming up or right, probably, you know, some of those great models form and people feature, they go up and manage it or you'll be prepared for it.
Yeah, you're all in the business of who certainly they influence. And I think it's worth while knowing how you influence, how you can be influenced, how you can partner and collaborate or grow the business. Um, so I think it's, it's worth at least having that. All right. Let's get into mission review. Mission review. What I've done here is we've all absorbed vision and your mission that I believe you established two years ago, but not around the table. Uh, we've put it on paper here, for agents, they have access to it. When we view visions, what we're viewing it as is, it is the future that we envision for the city. It is aspirational. There could be a future state. It may never actually be achieved, but it sets us in the right direction where the students we make. A vision is what has to be doing to achieve that. I would go without achieving. So for you, you have said that we have a vision of a recent advancement, or it's historic, or it's original here. That is the long term direction you want to take the city. For us, as a consulting firms to share with you, we believe in creating a platform for our team members to help our clients and our customers in a way that's meaningful to their clients enough. We have to bridge that for our consulting, first service management, first information. So, here's what I'd like to ask all of your residents here, I mean, what do you need from these teams? It's a symbol about what you need by the vision that you can put out there. And I'll start a conversation with that, I will follow up with some questions that I have, put up on your, some of them, and you're going to keep one of them, you're going to put down on there. What do you need from markets? Okay, this is from down here, this is down here, a little bit of a process. Okay, if I can stop determining.
So when I say meaning, that's not the vision, let's start, let's make a simple start with the vision. What does it mean to embrace and advance the city's historical originality? Um, it's a nod to the city's path and its future. It's a continuation that Oregon City was the most prominent place in the most, um, important historical life in terms of the west coast and then the, the region, um, whether it's the state or New York and territory. This is, city has always been in a leadership role over the entire area. Um, and so it's a nod to that history, but also wanting to continue that as a county seat or as a city and as a regional, um, player. Um, and so I think it's, it's, I love that, like, the word, but I think it's also not to, what was the slogan that we had, that we, for a while.
A server.
It's not, yeah, it's on, so we've all kind of, you know, been in that mindset. I think, um, Oregon City's identity, that we feel by every year, is becoming more prominent in terms of how, how it's going to be in the Portland areas. Oregon City is kind of still has a changing this compared to other places and has this ability with these, this land to be developed, but also the metro regions are, that's something we have this ability to really rekind of focus what the next step is. So I, I think it encompasses the past and the present and the future and that, that's what this town is all about.
So there's two themes, concepts that I hear commonly in the way bottom of the strike, leadership. Leadership, what does that mean? And you rooted some of it in the historical, here and an importance in the region, but what does it mean to be a leader in this region or how do you all enjoy that?
To build on what Rockham is saying, in terms of, not in terms of our distant past, in terms of the Native American culture, but in terms of any Western, Western culture, we were here before anybody else. Um, Oregon City has deep roots in our nation, and that is an identity that nobody can take away from us. It is an identity that set us apart from other places. It is, uh, an identity which helps give us vision. It's also an identity that helps us understand how we fit into the bigger picture. But we also come to it as a, from a standpoint of, not only the leadership, but that we don't, we are still first in any events. But we don't have to go to a point to where we're, you know, say, hey, look at us, we are, you know, we kind of know who we are already. Um, we can quietly leave, so when I, my friends talk about, you know, gee, you're in Oregon City, it's, well, you know, Portland is a suburb of Oregon City. We were here before you were. I mean, they're, they're more prominent, but I think it has a lot to do with our, our basic deep, deep seated roots that give us a role as a regional leader.
So leadership there in your.
Denise, both of them.
Denise, in your, leadership in your definition, is really about, um, the longevity and the, the, okay, want being first, being here first. But what I'm not hearing you say is, this does not necessarily mean a need to show off that sense of being first. There, there is a humble humility to the city that simply acknowledges the deep history, and that's how we want to be. We want to be known as having been here, stolen here, we don't need to tell you that.
Well, they're likely used as a slogan at the hometown deal. That is something that's really important to the community, and I don't think that other communities have that, as, not only as a slogan, but as a value, as a, as a sense of, you know, as a person that lives in Oregon City. That statement, hometown deal is part of the identity that I take when I go out elsewhere.
I struggle with the regional leader. When I read the mission statement with it, it makes a little more sense. And I, I think that the story, and I understand that the story part and how that informs the duty, but I could be region leader. But then if you look at the mission for it, for the state, safety, economic, for our citizens, then that makes sense. But it's almost, it's almost using leader in two different ways, leading, you know, being the leader as opposed to, we've got results in terms of public safety numbers, scans, job creation, livability. Lead in that, but although we want to lead the region, I guess that's what, that's the vision.
I don't think it's saying that, but it's something to say about this part of the role. This, this city has in the past been a regional leader. And that's embracing it. And it's something we, that, that role, it's something we have to be the regional leader, instead of we're embracing this ability to go forward and, and the path. I don't think it's saying we have to be, I, I totally get the story and, and does inform where we are as a city. But it's not saying.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, regional leader, nice to meet you, I've never met. Sean, I was asking, yeah, you have to be that part of it.
Yeah, so a leader can be a, now without a definition, and enables you to go whatever definition you want against. And if your vision, you've done, you said, the regional leader, it is open to interpretation. Without reading the mission, is that an intent? Or do you want to somehow qualify it? And therefore, that's why you wrote the mission, saying, leadership means safety, economic opportunity, the ability to historic.
I believe that's why the two were paired together in the beginning.
So it was meant to qualify. Because others may, they work together, got it. So we can't, so we have to say, being a regional leader means that these themes have to come out, we have to address those. What I'm saying is tomorrow, if we don't have conversations around safety, economic opportunity, livability, historic significance, you've missed it. Got it. Talk to me about that, uh, a playoff topic, but I want to hear other perspectives as well. There, there's this tension here, with the historic significance and the advancement of the community. I'm not, if, if not being core, and then we all know where, wait, there's a tension there, I want to understand it. So can somebody give me more of what that means to you? You're, you're speaking the whole city, what does it mean to live in that tension?
So, I, I'll, I'll put my, I, I've worked in policing here twenty-four years almost, and the interesting thing to me, like, when you said attention, I thought of the city in terms of, what were pioneers, they were looking over their shoulder. A lot of times I feel like, we do look over our shoulders a lot. And so I, I was, we as a city, and I thought about this from the perspective of a police department, how are we innovating? While not losing sight of who we are in terms of this, the historical significance of this city. When I started policing here, if you ask any other police department, Oregon City, it sounds hometown. And everybody trained is how to be cops, talked about bar fights on the main street and just everything that came with that. We lived here, left, moved back here five, six years ago. The realtor said something to me that was very interesting, she's been a realtor here forever. She said, it used to be people buying homes in Oregon City, or from around Oregon City. I said, where are they from now? She goes, Portland, North Carolina, Texas, California, so now a lot of people moving to, who would normally move to Portland, to be in Oregon City. And we really see that in the community and the policing, basically. So, uh, what we used to police, we police now completely different. So there's a whole lot, I think, that the cities, like, I think that's the tension that I see of, like, okay, now how do we, as we're more of a suburb of Portland than we've ever been in terms of what we see coming in, like, Portland. So how do we, from a DEI perspective, especially, we're more diverse and are going to continue to be than we've ever, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of Portland problems, perhaps a deal. So that to me is like, how does innovation fit in? That's one of the things we really worked within the police firm in the city is, how do we introduce innovation while not losing sight of this Oregon historical nature of the city? Does that make sense?
Yeah, what I'm hearing you say is, and I'm trying to be, because it's so obvious, when it goes to the citizen, that's what you're saying, it goes to the members of this community, it's race there, where you see the tension. And yeah, not losing tension in a negative word, I'm suddenly meaning two concepts, not in opposition even, but in, in suspension with one another, some winning, some losing, that it exists. And you're saying that, of course, in your role, you see it as, in citizens, in, in the, in the number of citizens.
What I struggle with a bit is, as a community member, and we have these two, North Carolina, Texas, and wherever, how do we help instill in them the, the feeling that this is the community that we have? And don't try to turn this community into the place that you were just escaping from, because that is pretty typical.
Or they, or they moved here because this is the community we create, and that, and that framework here. I mean, that's, that's definitely.
Yeah, so I mean, if you have, there's something there, but I, I'm going to try to capture it. So there's a difference between fleeing somewhere in, right, that's a, that's a very loaded word, you know, leaving somewhere and going towards something. And what I'm also hearing is that we, Oregon City, we want our leadership in the region to be understood. So to me, there's an implicit statement of, you come to us, this is who we are, and we want you to be a part of that. But we are that, we are something, and there's something historic about that, that you're coming to, not, that you're trying to recreate something somewhere else. There's a tension there, isn't there?
There, yeah. The, the reason I bring that up is that I lived in Bend for a number of years, and there was a dynamic of, wow, we want to come here because it's open space, we've got mountain, we've got this. But yet there was also that tension of, well, I want to be five minutes from the nearest Fred Meyer, I want to be, I want this, and you go there today, and in my opinion only, as a planner. The people that have lived there now have basically turned it into the places that they were fleeing from, there's, I hear my friends complaining about traffic, and then they complain about all the things that they didn't have before. But there were levels of expectation, well, why should I drive over the mountains if I want to go to such and such a store? And so now, you know, ninety-seven is like one giant strip home, it wasn't that way when I lived there. Because people at that time were saying, no, we don't want to turn it into that place, that other place. Or they were always comparing, we don't want to be Beaverton, you know? They're pretty close to Beaverton now. So that's, that's sort of the dynamic I'm talking about, and we have, we have urban, um, we're in the urban core, you know, we, but we're still kind of a small town. We do have, um, I won't pick on Portland, but we do have some metro regional problems that people have come here, and basically we have to figure out and tell them those types of behaviors, that's unacceptable here. You know, you want to do all that, you know, go someplace else. This, this is, this is the town that, you know, again, like you stated, you're coming here to something that you're looking for. We don't know, you know, I don't know what everybody's looking for, but it's very unique, it's very special, but we can raise it like that.
So there's an identity to this city that needs to be articulated.
And cultivated.
And cultivated. But there is, and I'm explaining the words here, because I'm trying to put some things in your mind, just I'm opening up here. There is an identity in the city that needs to be articulated in order for people to know what they're embracing. Because what I've heard is there is an explicit or maybe implicit expectation that they are coming to something. Where they coming to? Where they coming to? What is, what is this city?
Coming to a place where people are friendly, where people, for the most part, know their neighbors. Uh, there are many locations where it is very walkable, and then there are many locations where if you're brought to there, you have to e-bike if you want to get up some of those hills. As you go coming across the river all the time, there are, um, there, I think that there's an expectation by some members of the community that it is, I think the survey shows that, that it's a good place to live. I mean, we don't have issues with, you know, our police department, we, I mean, I hear all the poodles about our library, you know, we can go here, we can get coffee, we can do this, we can, you know, we can do these many things that make us a, 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 a community. But yet, you know, on the, on the flip side, we do have some tensions, and Jim mentioned around DEI, I think, things that are.
Was that, so I hear a lot about livability in there.
I'm just, I'm trying to connect the dots, because I wasn't here, and some of you weren't either.
Kind of, if you can, you say, role as a leader, and it's just who we are, we're going to embrace that and we're going to advance it. We're going to advance it by knowing that people want to be here, and people want to be here because we are, and so I've heard that, oh, so we're starting to connect some dots there, I get it, okay. What about those other, we go to mission now, what about those other pieces? It's saying.
Oregon City is a city in transition, city going through evolution. And I'm with the chief, I came here in seventy-three to fix something up, and I said, what a dirty mill town. And I moved here in ninety-four, and this city continues to evolve, but it's still trying to hang on to its original identity. And that's the conflict, I don't see it, we can talk about the historic versus the modern conflict, but I don't think that's the core of the matter, I think that's respected among people.
And Jim mentioned around DEI, I think, things that are.
Whatever. So I hear a lot about livability in there. I'm just, I'm trying to connect the dots because I wasn't here and some of you weren't either. Kind of what you can each say. Role as a leader. And it's just who we are. We're going to embrace that and we're going to advance it. We're going to advance it by knowing that people want to be here. And people want to be here because we are. And so I've heard that. So we're starting to connect some dots there. I get it. Okay. What about those other, we go to mission now. What about those other places? It's same. Oregon City is a city in transition, city going through evolution. Now I'm with the chief. I came here in seventy-three to pick something up and I said, what a dirty little town. And I moved here in ninety-four. And this city continues to evolve, but it's still trying to hang on to its original identity. And that's the conflict. I don't see it, we can talk about the historic versus the modern conflict, but I don't think that's the core of the matter. I think that's respected among people. But I think what it is is, who are we, what are we going to become? How are we going to balance this purple standard of livability that with what we're going to experience in the future? So I think that's, it's the transitional forces and the evolutionary forces that are, I mean, look at the latest things, every time we get in development, it's a giant battle. You know, do we want to be, we look at the balance of the, and, and I don't do well with, that is a vision status, but I do well with vision status. And then what do we want this place? We don't want it to be a better community. That's not a good place to be for a community at all, in a whole. We want those things that are stated in it. We want economic opportunity. We want to maintain livability. We want to respect our historic significance. And above all, the first rule of government is safety of the citizens. We will not yield on that. We do not want to be Oregon. And we want to, we want to follow our own guidance and we want to learn from what we perceive are the errors of others. And that's a gentlemanly saying. We can do both. And you can have growth, but you have to have growth that makes sense. So I mean, when I sit there with the other four members of the commission, that's what goes through our minds, trying to strike that balance. Be respectful of this city's history, its livability, the things that the chief said that attract people here. But also we don't want to fall off the spectrum. We're not going to be Andy and Mayday, we're not, you know, we're going to be, we want to maintain the best of all worlds. You don't have to commute to go to your job twenty or thirty miles. That's a plus. So can you maintain, can you get that economic opportunity, maintain that livability? And I am very proud of our tolerance and pride in this, not, you know, tolerated. So that's my thoughts on this combination of those two statements. And as always, I, I think much the same, and we just stated somewhat differently, but that's, that's how I see those two statements. The, um, the elements of safety and livability and historic significance to me fit into a definition used in the better way. But economics, economic opportunity, excuse me, possibility, economic opportunity stands out. Because that says, don't just live here, work here, be here. This is it. Is that intentional? Is that, I mean, I see some nods like that.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I had the opportunity to live here and work here.
It's like, and I don't want to be a community of words, I don't want to be a community of deeds. If you don't, if your actions speak for themselves, and people look at it and say, look at that community, you don't have to brag. It's a draw. That's where I want to begin. They've got all the best of all worlds. And that's the goal of this commission. I mean, it, it sounds obvious, but that's a very clear and differentiated statement, is that we are going to balance both you live here and you can work here. Working life together in one overall community. Again, I know it sounds simplistic, but that is a statement that is not true about many of your neighboring communities. See, not that, is that, but it takes, I mean, I appreciate the second side of relief in terms of thinking about how this is going to tie our discussions tomorrow. Because, you know, if economic opportunity is truly part of that, being a suburban, located community just by geography, location, population, these, I have that, or we live in residential, it's really easy. The economic opportunity, one on the commercial employment side of everything. Right? I think that's something that you can struggle with, whether it's urban law or the employment that we have available for us when you're competing against jurisdictions that are spending a significant amount of money, putting in roads, infrastructure sidewalks, utilities, shovel ready versus, oh, you've got a chase tour. Another thing, I, I don't know what this one, I played on, I'd be interested to hear the conversation. You, like, shouldn't say, commissioners were saying, you know, was a mill town, right? When did it change? Because it, because it wasn't, I mean, I say that seriously in terms of, you know, it's October, October twenty-eight, nineteen eighty-seven, it's just been this transition that, and I, I even grant this tension that I've felt over twenty years here of this development versus eating what's here, what it's looking like versus what's here has always been, it seems to be getting with thanks, depending on what the development is. So, you know, what I think about, I, I, I think, I, I'll tell you, I think my son and his staff have gotten frustrated of, we have these great ideas, these, you know, where everyone's behind it, and sometimes it feels like we choke, we choke our own programs to death. Because we're still turner of change and letting it happen in the light of change. And, and I think that, how do we get through that? How do we, how do we make that step on, you know, felt like really, really good in the way of earth. And failure in order to be. And then, you know, the other thing I'll think that I'll say is, it's interesting, we want to talk about historical significance. I really think, I would love to hear the discussion amongst the commissioners and, and the team. I think we missed a whole lot of historical significance in this town since wagon's got her. And you tried to say like, since everything through wagon, I think it's just, you know, Native American.
Oh, yeah.
I, I mean, it's, it's been eye opening to realize probably the harms we've done of the defect of how we talk about our community and its historical significance. Completely closed minded to what happened to it right now.
Well, that leads to the DEI and stuff, and the problem that this can have is with the issues that we're seeing on the news and in our schools and everything. Um, but one of the things I think, the, the, when is the mill town stop, right? And I, I, so I've heard that tension, I don't think is necessarily a back and forth tension, but, but especially people that are not from Oregon City. Um, it's, there's some of it which is not wanting to change. And I get that, and that's something that is an all kind of small towns. But what I think is different in Oregon City is the people that have always lived here are like, we don't deserve that. It, we, we've always held ourselves back. And, and what I mean by that is, there's a reason we didn't have a new library or a new high school or a new police department for years and years and years. And at some point, it's like this community is not that community. It's like this, it's the mindset of being a mill town. So even if it wasn't a mill town, it is now, the mindset of that is this is a working town. We don't, we don't have the money to have these fancy things. We don't expect it. Um, and I think that stunted a lot of the development growth too. But, but it's like, we first built the high school, I, that took us twenty years or twenty-five years. And when I, I've been there years for Westland, I'll joke, we joke about this, but when I went to the high school for the first time out, the new high school, after living my entire life in this town, I was like, oh my gosh, I died and gone to Westland. And, but I, but you have to think of it that way. And then a bunch of state now who said, look, we've done, we've replaced almost every city in this city. And now Oregon City is, it's not a mill town. I mean, this town has changed. And we're starting to see people that have lived here always, and we do deserve this. And we do, we should, we are a leader. We are, what other town has done that? What other town has replaced all its facilities in, in a couple of commissions? You know, and so that goes to Jake's point of celebrating our success. We know that. We, we sometimes get bought down with this book. The successes that we've talked about this too, the successes that we've had in this town in the last ten years. I've never seen it before in history in this town. So, so I don't know that it's part of this back and forth about moving forward, but there's this, this setting ourselves back where, oh my gosh, I don't know, are we ready to give up?
The, the bridge celebration was a good example of us bragging about something that we did, but we also took into account our partner across the world and said, we need to celebrate this together. This is an opportunity. And it has been, the residual goodwill that that has created is still continuing. I'm still hearing about it. I'm still getting comments from people, not necessarily our community members, yes, but people who came because they heard about it and said, that was really cool. And I said, well, you know, this is kind of what we're all about. And, you know, make sure you pay attention for the next thing that we're going to do. Because we will be, you know, maybe not as grandiose, but we will continue to celebrate because I think it is important for us to, to draw some attention to ourselves modestly, but I don't have a problem bragging about it, you know? It's, it, you know, it's, it's a good thing. I think the other thing that, that was brought up that is causing some angst to the community, it's part of the growth angst, is as Jim stated, we've got more diversity in our community, although some of the populations are somewhat in this. It is something that Oregon City, we're now ready to deal with it. We're ready to say, let's stand up. So one of, I mean, something I was talking to Tony about is I said, you know, maybe we need to start doing land acknowledgement um, at the beginning of our commission meetings, because we need to acknowledge that. And Rocky and I, you know, we like to talk about, we could talk about history, cows come home and warn everybody else to death. But, you know, it's something that's interesting and exciting to us with this past, again, for me, as a historian, frames the present. And it also gives me a direction for the future because we don't want to make those same mistakes. So I think, I liked your statement about, I never thought of it that way when you said that people's community didn't deserve it. And then I think about something that I talked to Ed, I look about a few times. And it just kind of hit me when you said that, because I think that it's true. I know, yes, but I, but I think that that is changing. I think the residents that are here now have a level of expectation for advancement, for moving forward. We can be solidly grounded and rooted in our past. That's, that's what makes us unique and special. It's like I said, nobody, no one in the city, from the Missouri, or add the claim to fame that we do, nobody can never take that away from us. But we have to take that, send those branches and move, move it forward. It's just like trying to keep up about recruiting businesses. And I was in that game, so to speak. You're never going to make anybody happy and they're going to dangle something in front of you. We have to figure out how to find those entities that will fit with what we have, because they ain't making any more land to get into, you know, well, gee, we should need to attract a semiconductor. I, I get really leery about companies who come in and then all of a sudden they're here for twenty years and then they just bang their headquarters out of your town. And that's, that's a problem.
So there's an element, so I'm hearing a lot about, well, let me do this. I'm going to encourage you tomorrow, when you have the time to talk about these topics that you say are very important to achieving your vision, to considering some of the phrases that you use that don't immediately fit into the words you chose to put on paper. So I can go to a point of saying, DEI is a certain stock alone in the psychological safety. Is that your intention? That is, it could be. If, if it's not, again, important, but maybe you could. Maybe we should make that explicit. Economic opportunity is different than economic stability, growth versus we're still here. These are going to define the identity and that tension that we were talking about. In the interest of time, I'm going to keep us moving forward. However, is there anything that you have heard around this table today that makes you feel like we need to embed ideas into the words we've chosen here? I'm not asking us to rewrite the mission, that's not it.
Can we embed those into the, to the bold statements, change the bold statements to better reflect, so, you know, promote diversity, blah, blah, blah. But maybe there's one other thing we need to say.
Okay, fair. Yes, let's embed in the engine whatever the definition of success is against the idea of safety, in this case, or maybe DEI, DEI, number one, as we put out there. Okay? Anything else that rises to that level in your mind?
Well, I keep staring at the word dynamic. And so I guess when we're talking tomorrow, to me, dynamic means the ability to change and adapt, change to circumstances. And so I think that's what should be embedded in some of these words is how do we change in the natural, current circumstances or what you see.
So we should be, what I'm hearing you say is, we should be thinking about the, I mean, you're starting to use strategic leadership, but the, the things we're going to do need to be movement fix. They need to be progressing, passing somewhere. I know some of my more critical listeners are hearing that there's a pretty bold statement in there, you know? It's what I'm listening, I mean, I, I see these words. But when I just heard this elements coming from our commissioners, I've never heard that element before, that clarity. Um, because I feel a little bit of the tension every day between growth, stability, neighbors, new team, right? I feel that every day. And, um, as a development manager, it is a, it's quite a suspect, I mean.
I think we all feel that tension between these dichotomies. And, and I think what a bonus that, that dynamism, I mean, ah, that's really hard for me. When I look at this, it, it's that, it's that wanting to be a leader and wanting to be embraced and wanting to move forward. And I completely acknowledge the historical significance and the historical tradition we have in this town. There are times that, I would look at the word embrace, embrace can be a very supportive thing. And embrace can be a bear of that completely, you know? And so there are times when I feel the weight of that historical significance. You know, there's a difference between acknowledging history and not being able to let go of it or be dynamic and moving forward. And I don't know what the right answer is, what the right balance is that, but that's a tension that I feel every single day working in, you know, it's even to very, very small things, like I've got shelves in my library that are probably fifty or sixty years old, that do not meet our needs in any way, shape or form. And I know that, you know, that would be the most controversial thing that I could possibly do, be attracted to place those shelves. Be above the pool, or a patient, or a gay, but, no, I mean, I would have people at commission meetings, you know, calling my head. That's a tension that, that's a very valuable example of this, but I think that's used in, in everybody's department. I think that's something we all struggle with.
It's interesting that they, that they bat on each other though, because the theme that I got on all of it was self-sufficiency. Self-sufficiency in economics. We don't want to have to depend on Portland for jobs, for money for our residents. We don't want to depend on Portland for our identity. We want to be our own city. And that idea kind of runs counter to some of the mentality of the, you know, oh my God, something new. You know, and that just, but everybody agrees on the self-sufficiency, but how to get there is where the disagreements lie. I don't know how you get past that. If I knew how to get past it, I'd love to be able to circle around.
My major suggestion, the next twenty-four hours are contributing to that, how we get past it. So, um, I stand between public comment and dinner right now. So, like, that's start to close up down on this topic, not because it's unimportant, because you've now heard some of the perspectives in your commission, you've heard some of the perspectives of your team members. And I will encourage you with the dynamism comment that we just had. Please, I get the benefit of, I wasn't here and I just get to read words, but what will be your challenge? But what will be your challenge tomorrow? What will be the balance you strike between words like plan, do? There's a lot of planning and do that is not meant to offend, that is an acknowledgement of what you all just talked about, of the difference between being what we're actually making movement. Right across. So even down there, can we call the public comment?
I don't really understand why that's supposed to be on the agenda.
Historically, when we've gotten together, had an opportunity to debate anything in the public lines, speaking for three minutes, like we typically would have.
I don't recall us doing that. We did it online last year. I think I was like out to lunch when we did that. Do we have anybody online?
There's no one online and we, I believe.
I, I'm not sure how I want to take that statement. I think he's still nervous. He may not want to say something at this point.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
This is what I was planning on saying, this really important dynamic conversation you guys have been having, I really appreciate it. Um, everyone knows how significant history is in Oregon City. The historicity of this place is undeniable, it's immutable, and it's part of our DNA here. Um, but I, I feel compelled to remind the commission that all of it eventually. The, the history of Oregon City was built on progress. The history of Oregon City was innovation. It was on industry. It was building new things. It was creating and changing things for the better. And I'm sure that not everyone was breaking in that. Not everybody. I hope that there were people that didn't want us to have elevator. For certain. History, I think of our history as, as a history of progress. As we're getting things done and moving forward. And that's my definition of leadership, is doing things so that others emulate our actions. And actions is your, that's all.
We can move things forward by being innovative, creative, et cetera, et cetera, without basically losing our soul, so to speak. But as I've talked many times, we make it the Oregon, to fit Oregon City. We can make that progress fit in our community. And sometimes the progress changes our fit a little bit and it becomes a different fit. But it's still the core of our identity. But we can still move that forward. As I said, and we're rooted in the past, but we use that past to move us into the future. We acknowledge it in the present and then we keep moving. We don't stop. It's not static. And now it's time for dinner, right?
It is. And as you close out on time for dinner, I'll just ask you to remember a couple of things. One, thank you, Tony, it was not planned, but there is a text. This being the first conversation, especially as I'm on the stage, as you think about what Tony and the team had to share with you back at the dinner. Just about an hour and a half of what has progressed, what has happened on behalf of this city. So that's number one. Number two, you've got half an hour here. Um, spend time together. Any minute of it. So let's put thirty on the clock. I believe catering is up and down. Yeah, we'll come back to that. But thank you all.
You guys have some time together? I mean, talking about the practice, not just the story. So, here's how we're going to spend the rest of our meeting together. Again, round A1, it's about level setting. It's about making sure we're all on the same page. Our first conversation was meant to be that aspiration model, vision and mission that will continue to evolve as you go through the day tomorrow, in terms of how you actually make movement happen within that vision and mission. However, you did that exercise two years ago as well. And so he's been working on various initiatives for the last two years. You have Tony and his team to provide an update to you. That would be the majority of the rest of the time we have together this evening. The intent of that, again, is to bring us all on the same page. So, I'm asking the team to give you those updates. If there are questions, if there are points of clarification, please interject and bring those to bear. But also know, be thinking about what you're hearing as things that have been accomplished, yes, but things that remain to be done, which they're very well made, and how that informs your thinking as we go into tomorrow to have those conversations at those broader meetings. Fair? Questions? Concerns?
All right, thank you. So, as part of the agenda that went out, we did try to provide some information. So, we had just received earlier this week the Thought Community Survey. So, we attached this way, there's an executive session that kind of summarized pretty well, pretty short, and then all the rest of the data, the results are all included there if you want to revisit the background data.
You guys get some time together? I need to talk about the practice, not just the door. So sorry. Um, here's how we're going to spend the rest of our evening together. Again, around day one, it's about level setting. It's about making sure we're all on the same page. Our first conversation was meant to be that aspiration model, vision and mission that will continue to evolve as you go through the day tomorrow. In terms of how you actually make movement happen within that vision and mission. Um, however, you did that exercise two years ago as well. And city has been working on various initiatives for the last two years. You have Tony and his team to provide an update to you. That would be the majority of the rest of the time we have together this evening. The intent of that, again, is to bring us all on the same page. So I'm asking the team to give you those updates. If there are questions, if there are points of clarification, please interject and bring those to bear. But also know, be thinking about what you're hearing as things that have been accomplished, yes, but things that remain to be done, which they're very well made, and how that informs your thinking as we go into tomorrow to have those conversations at those broader meetings. Fair? Questions? Concerns?
Turn over to Tony and his team. Thank you all. All right, thank you. So as part of the agenda that went out, we didn't try to buy some information. So we had just received earlier this week the Thought Community Survey. So we attached this away. There's an executive session that kind of summarized pretty well, pretty short. And then all the, the rest of the, the, the data, the results are all included there. If you want to revisit the background data, it's pretty, there's a lot of it. I think it was actually pretty quick. If you're just kind of looking at the graphs and the information, you can put together a detailed breakdown of each one of those. Um, now we did provide you, you know, your goals from last year, including kind of breaking out each of the summaries underneath that as well, and our accomplishments that we had over the last year. And then we included in there the goals progress report as well as kind of that initial calendar we made for the Thought Beast app that's going to be completed. And so we're going to start on just one point one and work our way through. So we'll start with Patrick. Um, and we'll, there are questions while he's presenting or while we're going through it, this list, so we'll answer them. Otherwise, you know, some of this, some of you are probably more familiar with, and other ones you can discuss with it. So if there are any questions about anything that I discussed, we're going to kick it off with Patrick. We got to start with the, uh, for again.
Sounds good. If I have to take a minute to breathe, I just, I just, everything, uh, yeah, it's, well, yeah. So go on, promote diversity, equity and inclusion for a safe and inclusive community and organization. Um, there were three key initiatives under that goal, two of which we consider to be essentially 100% complete and successful. The third is about 95% complete. And the only thing outstanding is to bring a document to the commission, including a statement and a commitment for essentially buying or not of some sort. Um, we also just recognize that this specific goal and these initiatives are not usually simply tasks that we're just checking on, but are built around the idea of continuous improvement and DEI. And, uh, so we expect kind of an evolution, even though we're saying we feel 100% complete of these, a lot of this stuff, um, which is beyond only the constant improvement. So you want to go through each. So one point one was develop a comprehensive internal and external DEI framework. And that's the one we do is more about 95% done, um, MGT, uh, and staff. We're preparing to bring this last month before we had our November outage, uh, kind of through a little loop. But essentially it's a, um, it's a document, kind of combining all the efforts from the other initiatives with four strategic priorities. And with some potential initiatives that the commission and the city unitly insert, um, kind of using moving forward to support those, those strategies. The other two, so one point two, um, second initiative under that goal, create a new task force to guide an external grant. Um, MGT, um, recruited and formed that task force. Um, and over the 13 month period, they met seven times from June through December 2022. Um, and seemed to achieve all the, all the goals and ideas that they wanted to do with that group. Again, another potential concept that might have an ongoing nature or future initiatives to include. But, um, felt good about the conversation, the discussion that they had with that task force. Um, and then the third initiative under that goal, evaluating internal policies and procedures to reduce barriers and systematic inequities. Uh, again, a very big looming initiative that should be ongoing, but, um, with MGT coming over that, over the last, over that 13 month period. This one, um, it comes as, um, their assessment. They went through our policies, they interviewed and met with staff, um, and put together the organizational DEI assessment that was brought to the commission back in November. Any other kind of comments or follow up questions about that? Just turn it in.
So I know that we had some very dynamic folks on that committee and I just think that their work needs to be. I was asked, let me go back, I think, I was asked if they're done and I said, no, you're not, you're not done. And you're done with that task, but I said, there's more work to come.
Yeah, I, I, I love that. And they, they had that discussion too, that if the investment in that, in continuing them like that, as I've been on, you know, and was definitely part of their conversation. Um, they, they felt like they just scratched the surface of something that I think that they could talk about. Um, but yeah, that was a, that was something, conversation among that group, kind of thing.
What would we need to do to move that? Or, I mean, obviously we have to put some new things in this category that.
So one of the clarifications you got, I want to just consider, you have this time and an overarching guide. It's about, I wouldn't say 95%, so they have, they've got a draft document that I just kind of take with the commission for kind of a final blessing in egg. Ultimately, it was a, it was a unique activity of the kind of culmination of their work, um, which led to a statement and commitment about, um, advancing DEI efforts. And then with a lot of, uh, kind of supporting ideas and options to continue moving forward. So there's a framework, there's a team in place, policies and procedures are ongoing and ongoing, and it's what is next. There was a pretty comprehensive study that they've invited that includes a lot of suggestions and ideas that some of the easier ones we've already been taking care of, whether it's in the recruitment, um, world or some of our policies and practices, but, you know, that's.
The bullet point says your number three, where are we on those?
So, but yeah, those ones were three.
It's not really, it's number two, but the third box, I guess.
So around purchasing.
Sample established internal project teams to discuss, etc. But then said, well, it's still that till June 23.
Yeah, so, um, we have not established a person, there are lots of discussion, but, um, we have not those, I think those are going to be some more ongoing, like human projects that would support that on a basis. And, and, but we have had discussions on that because the, 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 it does say staff will stack internal project team to discuss and explore opportunities. So we've had some really good discussions with their dev team and internal purchasing team about what this thing looked like, quote, quote.
That'd be just something that I want to. Thank you, that's very good.
And other questions for Patrick? And next one is two point one, being on the table this month.
All right, um, oh, two strategy two point one was a priority project in the transportation master plan to maximize safety and connectivity. Um, and so I guess where I'm going to start with this one is since we adopted this strategy, we moved forward many of the community's priority transportation projects. That included the installation of the rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Malala Avenue at Barkley Hills, near the first outlet. The installation of two RRP's on Holcomb Boulevard at Brenton Avenue and Spawn Avenue. We've been successful, we've been awarded a safe access school grant that will complete those remaining pedestrian improvements on Holcomb between Holcomb School Road and Winston. So that includes a third RRP, um, and crossing as well as the sidewalks, bicycle lanes, um, and street lighting along that north side of Holcomb Boulevard, along kind of that newer development area. So there is a small section that this year subdivision is building. So our work will be on either side of them to connect all of that together. Um, and we've also been awarded a community development grant for installation of ADA ramps on Main Street at 12 and Main Street at 13. Both of those grant projects will get started in the next couple of months. And that's so kind of where, where it ended up is, um, our transportation system plan as a whole was adopted in 2013. So with the adoption of the new 2040 comprehensive plan, new regional mobility targets, climate friendly and equitable communities. It's really time to kind of take a bigger step back and update our entire transportation system plan. And so with that need, it's, it seems a little, um, not cost or time effective to kind of step back and re-prioritize the projects in our current plan when we really need to take a couple of steps further back and really take a deep dive into the plan as a whole. So at, at this point, that's sort of what the my recommendation, uh, we've been talking internally about the timeline for the new TSB. We would be looking to apply for a transportation and road management, um, grant in March of 2024. That would mean we would hear back on the grant in fall of 2024. And as soon as we would inform of the transportation system plan update beginning in January of 2025 with a goal to be complete by December 2027. So kind of knowing that bigger citywide need, um, and then, you know, creating a committee and re-priorizing projects based on the existing transportation system plan holds up. I think doesn't seem like the best piece of our time and money when we, we need a bigger step back on the whole city plan.
So I think part of this is trying to identify, you know, I think the intent was to try to prioritize pedestrian crossings, city need improvements that we can make. So some of those were implemented on some of our more major streets with some of the bus, or the rapid flashing crosswalks as well as some new fill projects that we did. Um, so any other questions on this one? Okay, great. I'm going to two point two, Kendall, Arnold, Devon.
Sure. The strategy two point two, complete the analysis to identify our current maintenance, uh, parks, action, parks and facilities. Uh, so back in February of 2021, we did a contract with the DDTA to conduct the full, uh, system of urban maintenance assessment. Uh, this involved parks and area recreation facilities, library stations, city all-thing, we probably need to develop other parks, senior center pool and the new camps. Uh, what we did is once we had that assessment completed, uh, that assessment did get completed in June 19th, 2021. Uh, the assessment results were brought back to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee until like, like, two, April 21, and then was brought back to the city commission on August 10th of, uh, 2021. Uh, currently we are implementing, uh, this plan, uh, and from using this plan as a guide, uh, to help prepare, uh, us for upcoming repairs. We're having conversations with our department heads, our budgeting purposes, uh, to express the days that are upcoming. Ultimately, uh, as part of our Parks National Plan, which I'll talk, talk about later as well, we'll utilize this and integrate this into our Parks National Plan, which will allow us to gain a CIP plan as well to connect, uh, projects to SDCs. Uh, but it should be a plan that will, uh, will be utilized, uh, on an annual basis to address problems, uh, not just for parks, uh, but for all of this, the facilities in the city.
Do you have questions for Kendall on that one? Okay, oh, sorry.
I guess I would say that the statement reducing the need for reactive repairs is maybe wishful thinking because we don't know what repairs are going to happen and we will have to react to them such as, I mean, I'm thinking right off the top of my head, exactly, park bathrooms. How many times have we replaced the fixtures in there? So I mean, to me, that's sort of a reactive repair. So I, I, I guess, how would we, how would you see us doing that?
And so obviously what we're going to do, we're going to have a funding strategy. I know we've had a lot of conversations around how are we going to fund, uh, and take care of this deferred maintenance. Uh, one of the things that we're going to do with our Parks National Plan is to add a, a, a funding strategy that we're going to present to, uh, the community and to the city commission on how we see we can tackle the deferred maintenance. Right now, we're working off of a plan and we're asking for funding, but we know the whole strategy because these are big ticket items. Uh, so, uh, we're going to need to be able to have the funding in place to, to plan well and advance the mission that we have in front of available. So.
To respond to the reactive, to the, to the.
I think, I think what, I think what that, I think what that all was saying was identifying the facility maintenance, reducing the need for reactive repairs and avoid deferred maintenance. So it was trying to get ahead of our deferred maintenance list rather than constantly being behind it. And then, and then we're so far behind, something funny fails, so we have to react to it. So it's how can we flip that script a little bit and get our facilities plans more proactive and on time? And that probably to prevent the needing to react to the failures that have been received.
It's our advantage, isn't it?
Well, what we do is we keep continuing the funding and hiring out, putting together plans that are, in addressing, you know, what those needs are, just keep chipping away at it.
Yeah, and the other thing too is we have to be able to, again, reserve, uh, certain amounts of money when we know these things are upcoming and we have to have a system developed out for that. And I think that is where the reactive feature comes. Hey, we have a million dollar repair that needs to happen. We knew it needed to happen 12 years ago, but we didn't put money towards it. Now it's even more expensive and now we have no choice, we have to make it happen.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you think the commission will see that master plan and the funding?
Uh, the, the master plan is supposed to give the country.
Sorry, I said, it's too long to answer. Okay.
Okay. All right, uh, two point three, I think that's the one.
Uh, two point three is resume the SDC, the utility rates for strike and balance. In November of 2021, we, um, had a work session to get, um, feedback on preparable agencies to use for the, the study. Um, we came back in April of 2022 to another work session to go over the research and documentation and what we found. And I believe at this time, the items considered.
This one's like, um, any questions about SDCs? Good. Mike, I'm going to walk through IT, um, two point four. So part of this is prioritization, the, the implementation of the IT strategic plan, um, you know, components of that were, um, looking at making sure we have disaster recovery and what we can do to harden some of our networks, hiring. We need my key director, if you remember, the first year of the budget that was not funded, it became funded on the second year of that two year budget. So obviously that's occurred. Uh, so another component that was added on at the end of our last goal setting was to redo the website. Um, and that included, uh, a more robust, um, citizen engagement component to the websites. There were two things were happening concurrently. One was redesigning, refreshing the website, but then also trying to identify more effective, you know, um, citizen communication and two, to, uh, receive additional feedback on the back. So that website refresh is in, is in process. Um, and then, I don't know, I feel like I talked a little bit about just, you know, how this has probably changed a little bit over the last, you know, four weeks. Yeah, um, part of, you know, part of the IT strategic plan was going to, you know, be dealing and talking with all the department heads, looking at what's needed, trying to coordinate and streamline some things. Uh, that has changed a little bit. We're going to be, still be doing that, but it's going to have more of a security focus. Uh, our best coming up with, looking at doing an internal security audit coming up and then looking at what we can do to, you know, improve performance, uh, lower risk and then also make things just a little bit simpler to manage, uh, so that we don't have the issues that we have before. So then a lot of that will be us working with each of the departments to make sure that we get what we need and we make sure that it's, that it's secure. Any questions about IT? Moving then, back to Kendall.
Uh, so strategy two point five, we need the Parks National Plan and status system development piece. Uh, we kicked off our Parks National Plan draft in April of 2022. We've had two, uh, public engagement meetings. Uh, we completed our assistance, this is. Uh, we completed our citizens' community status value survey and our online survey. Uh, just recently, uh, did completed two days of strategic planning to to talk about mission, vision, goals, uh and strategy. Uh, we're currently working on level of service and and benchmarking uh this month. Uh, we're also uh working on developing a funding strategy. Um, and then we will work on an action plan uh in in the month of May. And the plan is to bring all of that information back to the city commission, the community, uh, and the parks and recreation advisory committee uh in June of twenty twenty three. Uh, our target completion, if if everything goes well, is uh September thirty one.
Their additional open houses that are being scheduled. I think, yeah, I was just trying to remember.
Can I answer your questions, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, anything else for Kendall? Oh, all right, James, do you want to take success communication and construction equipment to point six?
Sure, the strategy on that, well, the strategy to establish community wide bi-rotated connectivity to homes and business as well as work with the city. The draft plan is complete. Um, we now distributed the final draft of to some of the department heads for their input and comment. It will be presented to the city commission for its uh contemplation. That's where we are.
So we had more of a high levels, look at what the options available are for us to consider our existing conditions. All right, next is strategy two point seven, develop the citywide facility master plan. Uh, so we entered into contracts with Scott Edwards, our construction work with them in the past, some other building um improvements. Uh, we held our kickoff meeting with Sarah, I mean, with Scott Edwards. And uh several department heads at facilities like public works, community development, library, um operations. And so just really the kickoff meeting was to give them, you know, trying to consolidate all the buildings we own, the properties we own, who owns them? You know, some are owned by public works, some are owned by streets, some are owned by mills, some are owned by city. So making sure that we have a comprehensive list as well as all the buildings. And then working with them, making them the site plans, building drawings, lot layout, building layout information that we had. So now they're putting that information together. And so really this, you know, when we started this, it was, you know, what are we gonna do for the long term of of our facilities? Uh, what are we gonna do with um the old public works building on Center Street and the the lower yard? Uh, we 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 were able to get First Street, which obviously freed up a lot of the city project we were feeling at City Ball. But this is really, it might have been part of them looking at existing City Ball. Uh, Limpke, the C B building up across from Limpke, uh, Public Works on Center Street. We now have a mountain view reservoir, floating reservoir, like we just purchased the property, uh, in County for the Henry C. Um, new reservoir out there. So you're really trying to figure out from the site space, where are we gonna be? Where can we develop? How long is that your last one? Where should we be going? So, um, that's all, you know. I imagine it just went broadly in July or August, about the time we're able to get through that process with Scott Edwards. And then through the commission, but that's the kind of tack that we're taking. Just identify those main buildings that we utilize and uh provide us some insight into what what the options are uh for those facilities. I do think buying Henry C probably changes the discussion quite a bit about the lower yard and Center Street. Um, so, you know, once we're able to incorporate that between Henry C mountain view planes, especially mountain view. Um, you got able to have, you'll have a great discussion in the commission about what direction we might go there and the business options. Any questions on that one? Oh, good. Okay. Yeah, move to three, three point one.
Well, three, improve the city's engagement efforts to reach the broader Oregon city community and form the policy process. Um, I see we're about fifty percent done on that. And as Tony mentioned, um, we're in the process of the new website that's looking good right now. Working on identifying uh identifying some criteria for public engagement on that site. Working on updating the communications plan to kind of take advantage of some of the uh new developments in that field. Um, and we're currently in the process of bringing aboard the unity engagement specialist position that was talked about. We have interviews for that position Friday next. And more candidates I'm excited to talk to on that.
Any questions? Can you, Katie? Jamie, you want to take, yeah. Four one, yeah, almost.
So goal four was broken into two parts, four one one and two. The first was uh creating a formalized plan. Um, we spent hours with the former mayor, Clive Smith, running that plan. You all saw that, put that plan, that's on the website. Uh, obviously other resources sort of tell them the story, people here is what we're doing in Oregon City. Uh, the, so that that part is complete. Uh, the second piece, develop partnerships with other local and regional governments to develop local and regional solutions. Whether Oregon and Oregon cities needing serving the homeless population. Um, the serving of almost, uh, i- i- it's not just sort of recapping, we had a lot of this conversation before. There's some people who knew the conversation. Uh, it isn't so much that something in Oregon city is best served by providing all these resources. It's more this is a regional problem, the money that's come in is regional money. Uh, you know, the money that's coming in through Metro, county has money. And there's been a ton of momentum building uh around that. Uh, there is the most solutions, go with Blackwood County. And you all know a little bit about some things that are that are coming in our city. Uh, and it is bringing all the resources into one place uh to really, uh, over time. We have grown more and more efficient with how to uh as quickly as possible, provide services that are gonna hopefully get you where they need to be. This facility wouldn't do that, there's challenges. Uh, but we're in the process of that and the coalition is, uh, I'm not a part of the coalition, but I guess I sort of am. You had a subcommittee that is uh in the process. We've been refining a message that's going out to community members, interim associations, local businesses, start talking about what's coming. Uh, it's their project, so I'm about um trying to be coy about what's coming. But in in their interest, they're kind of providing the message, going through some due diligence. And very soon the community is gonna see a presentation about what it is that's going there. We're fully partnered in there, um, and our voice, the voice of our community, the pro, the con, all sides, we're weighing on it, weighing in on it. So you're gonna see that uh before this, you're gonna see that kind of going public. Um, so we're in the process of that and uh there will be a lot more to talk about once they start the public. That's all.
I got an email that said that they hired a manager. For almost cold, cold.
So I I don't think I've let too many cats out of bags to say that what the what the coalition is sort of growing over time. What what they're, uh, I'm speaking for them, but my sort of take on what they're doing is not providing the services, but finding a way to facilitate those services being uh provided. And trying to co- locate those services so everybody who's helping some today, everyone's right here. Uh, we need a housing person, the housing office is right there. And and we're not having to take time and communication to be calling and setting up multiple appointments. It's like Red Meyer, you can buy automotive, get eggs, uh, buy a shirt, it's all in the same place. It's sort of that kind of the uh idea that everything that we need to serve somebody is gonna be located in the same spot. And they need to sort of facilitate the coordination of this. They have an interim director working on behalf of the coalition. County is very involved in this, uh, the hospital's very involved, there's a ton of them. It's, they've got a really good business plan, there's a lot of, lot of diverse um inputs coming in. Lot of successful people trying to make this work and I think it's gonna be the best.
You have questions for Jim? Can I, whatever, fuck, uh, part has implemented citywide strategy, thanks.
As you know, staff identity, non-do strategic plan, two, two variety groups. And now that we're about seventy percent implemented, we can bring that uh the plan we discussed to a budget staff. Um, a meeting, so that there's some input on the city commission.
I'll take the next one. Again, you got a question around implementation of the twenty twenty two renewal study.
What's the second part, which says staff will implement an enhancement program?
Yes, that's, that's one of the things that have not been completed, you know, for more lack. The uh, in terms of every renewal, uh, this was really a, a call to communicate with the public about every renewal, uh, about every renewal project. And so public engagement process is now finished. And uh, so that's twenty percent. As you remember, we had town hall meetings, we had uh other community, five meetings, so we've done all those.
So we're just waiting for the ballot.
Yeah.
Uh, five point three, better.
Yes, we've implemented tourism strategy.
The the two of them, uh, we've implemented tourism strategy, staff, uh, uh, city commissioner has requested information related to uh a process to distribute funds for summer events. And that draft has been finished and you will see it on our cell for your review edited in. So uh, that's, and then of course, as you know, uh, we suggested, and I think John consensus of creation. Uh, we agreed to go ahead and uh move tourism toward, to a, under an umbrella, the destination management organization, so the D M O. So uh, I will be working with the city commission on making that transfer up to uh the D M O.
So I think part of that is having that discussion about, are we ready to do that? If we identified the plan initially, it was thought that we would be able to front of the law or have another hotel in town. But, you know, there did seem to be agreement that we would look into it, look at what the options are. And now we've reached out to Big Midville and we've heard, uh, they've recently set up destination management organizations um in their their jurisdictions. So trying to learn from what they went through in creating that organization itself. And then have that discussion, but we also felt like the priority was making sure that we put together some type of a process so that we can get funds out for the summer events that are coming up. So, like Jamie said, that'll be on your work session next Tuesday. And it really is similar to, you know, creating some criteria. You know, we put together examples of how much money could be the maximum light out. And I think it's on the decision of the commission would be, unless the commission decides that they want a different, the route to review and approve. Uh, we set it up very simple, so we can discuss that next week. Any other questions about this one?
I think it's five point four, really speaks the same thing as government, uh, with the uh monitor uh review of the city's market public and end programs.
So I think this one, we still have work, so, you know, we 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 had a meeting about putting the uh application process online. And so realizing that these things work together, but that we really do need to get those funds out for the summer. But then we still have to pick back upon it back up to have that discussion about, it was the application process streamlined sufficiently? Wasn't understandable, wasn't usable, uh, so that we can hopefully implement that as well. Um, here in the future. All right, we'll go to six point one, six point two.
Okay, I'm actually gonna start with six point two, uh, because there's a lot more that was happening on that one. So that is update our code to provide additional housing opportunities in Oregon City. And I should have been pretty much accomplished that through the rural housing program amendments. Uh, that started, I guess, last January and they were adopted um early June, went to effect uh July one. So that's what allows the right place to be, like, um, in foster housing. And then the second part of that is underway and you'll talk about that on Tuesday with the planning commission. And that is uh policy topics that uh really needed more discussion time, but we didn't have enough time to get it done and uh to meet the state deadline. So the planning commission started those conversations in October and they kind of just chucked them out um until, I don't know, I guess, last month. And so you should, you'll have, what you have in your pocket is kind of the culmination of the things that they talked about and decided. Uh, they're gonna talk about more with uh you all, uh, the city commission. And so the outcome of the kind of work session, I guess, we we're looking for on Tuesday is some type of direction about um what policies, policy topics that you would like to see more work done on. So none of them are are baked at all, they're just simple ideas that we could explore that would increase either housing choices or housing affordability. So that second piece is almost done, seventy five percent will be close to that. Um, and so some of the work that's happening there, I think we'll be into six point one, which is uh prepare a plan to identify and implement housing strategies, tools and opportunities that work best for Oregon City. And so that's, that's what we'll get out of that conversation is uh policy that can lend to uh those strategies, tools and opportunities. Uh, but that goal is not, for that strategy at least, it's not formally been started. Um, we will be required to adopt a housing production strategy in twenty twenty seven. So we've got four, four years, uh, probably start that in twenty twenty six or something like that. Uh, and so the housing production strategy has what what we will have, like, in our specific tools, actions and policies that we would uh plan, plan to take to address um housing needs that we get out of the housing needs assessment. Which the state is also calling housing capacity analysis. So if you hear that term, it's, it's the same thing as the housing needs assessment, they're just trying to use this terminology. So that's, so that's uh also, I think, part of this, it's one or two.
I think on this one, knowing that we have won a policy discussion, still trying to implement middle housing that is mandated by the state. To get that really does drive six point one with the potential of additional new legislation coming in. That is the weak to potentially impact how we pre-track, monitor and implement housing of all types. So, um, we may be able to get started if there is agreement on some of these policies that come out of six point two at the meeting that I mentioned. But I think we'll probably also be improved to kind of see what comes out of the legislature. Um.
I I never want to second, trying to second guess what we think they might try to do because, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a moving target, right? Yeah. And that's not, that's not fair to our staff, you know, trying to try to craft something. And I mean, we could be totally spot on by staring into our official mandate crystal ball. But um, it's in the shops, they were your network, but so, you know, I think that, but it's, I'm concerned, I mean, I don't think there's a problem thinking about it or. I don't think there's a problem thinking about it or beginning some discussion, but, so just a little bit going out.
Seems unknown. All right, next is, uh, seven point one, determining social relationship with the tribes. We have shared this through Oregon City, uh, this has been an ongoing, um, outreach with both Confederate tribes to Grand Ron, Confederate tribes and building new reservation. Um, whole by myself as well as in group settings with the community development director and public works director. Um, really on both the relationship building component of it alone, but then also specific projects. So we've had multiple meetings with Confederate tribes and Indian reservation, like the Kites Five Memorial. Uh, both individual with their representatives, deep representatives from Grand Ron and then joint meetings with all of us uh, moving that project forward. And then there have been, um, additional meetings and side projects with Confederate tribes and the Grand Ron uh, related to their development down along the river, um, for their, uh, the work that they're doing in the land lease amendment to the plan that you adopted for that property. But then also reaching out on other areas of, um, where, where we can work together. Whether that be discussions around some of the work done in I two oh five, with the I two oh five bridge. Uh, just making sure that we're coordinating and communicating and landing some locations where we're having areas of disturbance. Uh, we have started talking about, you know, what would be those opportunities to have a more formal, uh, relationship um, in terms of inadvertent discovery of how we can communicate, um, when that does happen, if that does happen, how do we, how do we make sure that there's an understanding of what's important, where is important, uh, when we're doing work that we do. Uh, so, once again, I think that this one, uh, is a lot of, uh, of listening and a lot of relationship building across multiple departments, uh, to find some, um, agreements and understanding of what their concerns are, uh, related to some of the development, where development's happening. And what those opportunities to collaborate on. So, uh, the, the story, um, from their perspective. Questions on that one? Thank you. James, you got seven two, establishing relationships, uh, partnership with the county.
Yes. When, uh, yes, working with, you know, we worked with the chain to create the, uh, the concierge institute, now that is, you know, all, all of that has been completed. Uh, staff, we work with the city commission to review the creation of a, a DMO. So all of that's going to, and to connect it. So, uh, we're in ninety, but that can just, uh, jump the concierge institute, that's done. That took a while, but the work on the DMO continues.
Okay, I think next one, one of us too.
Under, uh, I can't tell you how wonderful it is to work, so you, uh, uh, good people on our commission, what was great with it. Uh, they are, they, they are really into it, they're really wanting, they really want to go guards. And, uh, this is one of those kind of projects that I'm glad to say it's my fault. Because we've been working with them for a long time, so, uh, right now they're working, they have, uh, I think, uh, they have forty thousand dollars, I put into the budget last year, forty thousand dollars, for them. So they can actually have resources to work with. And they're using that money to develop a grant program to promote, uh, to support artists and organizations in the community. Uh, for, in the name of, uh, the public benefit. So, uh, they're very excited about that and that will be coming to you for your approval. Uh, sometime, uh, late in March, late September. So, uh, that's where we are, so that's an ongoing, uh, admission. Seven point four.
I think on that one though, right? There wasn't an emergency mission.
Right.
There was what?
There was not, you know, an active arts commission, you know, heroes.
I really did, well, they were, that was, it's no secrets.
What's that?
There was no heroes.
Right.
We're a real process.
Right. So I mean, just, just, you know, being able to reactivate that creative violence, certainly you can actually be funding opportunities within a year and a half. You can have, spend the major change, give a great resource to their community.
Uh, under seven point four, uh, uh, here again, the arts community really want, they really want to, uh, look at possibility of having an arts incubator. And, uh, as you probably imagine, that's going to take a lot of work and a lot of time. Um, but I couldn't think of a very good way to work with it on certain projects, so we need to be ongoing. So that's where we are in that.
And the last one is eight point one, developing a climate action plan. Uh, this is what we just did, having capacities to get to with everything else that we're beginning to, uh, originally this was going to be run out of, uh, the CD, uh, community development. Uh, between staff turnover, the need for this to be, you know, this is really focusing on what the city facilities could do differently. How we operate, like how we do our purchasing. Uh, and that was going to require, you know, staff and our team department, um, we just didn't have capacity to do it in a day. Uh, so I think this is one that we probably really need to focus on and talk about if it's going to continue into the next year. Would like to see this moving forward in some fashion. Maybe having a, 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 a larger discussion, but I think that's to staff are, um, especially knowing that a lot of this was written out of like planning, building, public works. Where we now have, trying to get through the legislation that's already in place with new legislation pending coming, um, as well as a pretty heavy lift in public works for about twenty million dollars in water projects with the loans plus the transportation system, national plan update. Uh, you know, the big projects getting open, so, um, so really just wanted to make sure we have a thoughtful conversation about how we can do this in a way that's actually achieving. That's it? So that takes that we have, have answered questions or something?
Yeah, I've been asked.
Top of us since we went over it.
Been asking of this one about the, um, the second, the first one engaged with PGE and our partnership and our opportunities, not only to reduce impacts for our facilities, but we've been asked about how come we don't have any other charging stations, you know, I think the nearest one is up at the hilltop next to the, the Alice's Center. And I don't know if there are any on this, you know, because, but, you know, we've had an opportunity to put them in and public works in it at Lipton, and somehow or another we didn't, didn't make that happen.
Yeah, we had two on Main Street, but one on, one or two on Main Street, right on the Main Street, uh, uh, parking lot, yeah. Um, you know, taking them up because of the vandalism and destruction that occurred to them. Uh, my own, you know, charging stations have changed, it's those ones that we put, it's been several years. Uh, it's, you know, but we've had discussions, both, uh, O-DOT, there's an O-DOT program, it's the only government channel electric program that does offer assistance with charging station, charging infrastructure. It is something we've actually talking about related to the downtown bathroom. Uh, because of what, you know, how we're going to impact those lots or the, the parking stalls that are there. In the back, we're gonna have to get electricity to that location, does it make sense to potentially work with PGE to put one or two in next to the, the bathrooms right there in these diagonal parking that we own through our permits. Uh, so those are things that we're putting, putting together about, um, and also, to add, I've been talking to vendors who want you to, uh, uh, come into Oregon City to establish those kinds of outlets, these stations. So, uh, it's all condition conversation, and we have two of them that, that we've been in conversation. So more like a private vendor who comes in, puts in the construction and then just makes them, you know, that you buy the, the charger, you just have to give the land. It's a plan, yeah. So I do agree, I think I ask, you know, some of this new investment that's coming in, especially at the federal level, you know, there probably are opportunities with, to work with PGE, just trying to figure out where, where they're playing plays.
There was changes between talking about that and stuff, because there's things that they can add into it.
Any other questions for us? Thoughts coming?
On the community engagement specialist, which I'm excited is moving forward, that's still in the form of a half FTE, correct? That's my understanding, yes. Um, and then as, because we've had conversations, well, heading into the next budget cycle, about maybe that full FTE, uh, absorbing apartment what James had proposed in, um, some of his plans, has that been communicated to applicants? Um, there's more of the communication has been, making sure they're right, this is a part transition first. Because you get kind of a chicken in the egg or a cart before the horse situation where if we say this is part-time, it may go full-time. We'll get people who expect full-time, and if it doesn't, the time, we lose them. Conversely, if we say, if we say that, we may lose out on something to be a great candidate because they don't want to go full-time. So at this point, no.
I think that probably, you know, I think it's a process, even as a discussion, if we have a successful down payment. If it's something they'd like to do, let's say it's funded a full of deep, you know, there is the awesome possibility of hiring that company.
Is there also the option of looking at if it works, I don't know, maybe, you know, job share. Somebody might want it to, well, it might be, become full-time for somebody might want only part-time that they share their jobs with someone else for them to get some better price of money.
Any other questions from the commission? We do. Thank you, sir. That's true. Oh, guys, you're back, you're back.
I, uh, like some of the room perhaps, I haven't had that, that appear in all of that before. Um, and I'm curious, to the commission and to those of you on the staff, what's your reaction to the updates? It was, is that, was that progress, was that good, was that the kind of progress that you'd like to see made over the course of about two years? And I'd like to calibrate numbers. I said that with no intention of, but what's your reaction?
If I look at it from a community relationship, because that's what I said, I look at everything. Um, you know, you go into any community, there's perceptions that their city employees don't do it. And in this room, we know that's not the case. And that's evidenced by all the work that's being done. And fortunate thing of that is, a lot of that work is invisible. And it's gonna be a matter of being our cheerleaders on that, that, you know, we're out there doing the work. You just may not see it because the intent of what this project is, is prep work. And it's trying to, sorry, just again, one of the things that I'm wanting to do, but that's how I look at it, the balance.
There are people who are tracking, uh, the completion of this. I mean, in a positive way, because they, they see it as progress moving forward. And so the more that we update this, um, every time, it shows that things are being completed. And I think that that's important for our public to have that piece of it that they have access to on a regular basis. They can go in and say, oh, wow, oh, look at, you know, look at that.
Your reactions were?
I think there's a big difference since the last time we've seen the, the little spreadsheet with the completion marks on it. Uh, since the last time we've seen that, I think there's been a lot of progress, uh, just based off of what we're hearing and what we've been seeing out in the community. And, uh, so moving forward, I'm looking, uh, I'm really excited about being able to have updates on the goals from the city manager on a more regular basis, um, in public meetings, so that we can be a lot more diligent about knowing where we stand with that and, uh, communicating that to the public.
So could you say something like, you know, that it was just provided on a more regular basis?
Yeah, we've decided that we're gonna do a bold update, I think we're as well decided.
And what if I get updated on a more regular basis, or that's, is this hundred percent complete?
One of the, one of the other questions I'd like to ask, and this is really to the commission, um, for the entrance, but also in, in a way of calibrating interaction. A lot of what the commission two years ago appears to have passed the staff with is putting together plans, putting together the strategies, making sure that that process that is invisible, quite frankly, that results in something is put in place. A lot of what I heard was very significant progress on, we have a plan for this now. And so I would, I would like the commission to weigh in, and this is in preparation for tomorrow. What is your thoughts or what would you like this entire group to be thinking about tomorrow? As it relates to the plans that have been put in place? Is it a function, is it a matter of now is the time to execute against those plans, to put those plans into action? Is there additional planning work to be done that has not been captured in here? What is the balance that you'd like us to strike tomorrow?
Well, I looked at Frank, because I've heard him say this for something, I was like, I was like, what? And you said it, can I do, it's time to do. Yeah, I think, um, and I, some of these plans, we've been working like ten years. I mean, some of these visions, not these visual plans, but some of these things, and, and, um, I, I, I think they picture, um, well, there's some of the big picture things in the city that I think we've lost track of. And I feel I definitely want to get back to some of those, so I think and that's one of the reasons I kind of said or reset, this is a time for us to have, you know, the whole commission, we have, um, these things in place and now we gotta move.
Other perspectives for you? Well, I think compared to these, like, you know, you've got planning and doing under teeter totter. And, you know, if, if you look at those last goals and see how many times higher consultant that created plan appears, it's not. So now we're gonna get to teeter totter the other way, there's still gonna be like a climate action plan. And there's still gonna be certain components that require additional planning effort. But not nearly as much as gone on in the last two years, and now, let's do it.
It does come that time, and do check that, all those things.
Yeah.
Do something with it, I mean, for no, there's been a lot of times it's been infuriating to sit up there and see plans, this that's remaining, it's out of the shell. And that's not what we want, so you have to, this is the asset test, do it. And we have to modify it based on the feedback we get from the plan plan, we can modify it. But don't want to get through, I've seen plans, the plan can be plans. I don't want to see that. That's not a criticism, that's just a story, we can, we'll plan to change that.
So I, I think that's the word, the call now, you know, the balance that we're talking about here, the movement from plan to action. And so what I'd like to encourage you to think about tomorrow. I'm gonna pull something up on the, the screen that's gonna start to guide our conversations tomorrow. You have plans and the experts on those plans are sitting in this room because they helped to drive those plans and did. They're going, we're going to be combined together into groups tomorrow with those who have the mandate to direct action and those who have the ability to affect action. And so I'm waiting to think tomorrow about what are the elements of those plans that you would like to bring forward and say, these are the things that we need to prioritize, these are the actions we need to take. And yes, there may be elements of completing a plan, that's fine. But what goes beyond executing the plan is, executing the plan means, and these three items. And we would like to see these three items or concepts prioritized in order to execute.
It can be, it's not that easy. Uh, obviously, we have to bring these plans and these things.
Uh, obviously we have to bring these plans and these things to the city commissioners. Or for dialogue and debate and edits and revisions. So if, if we don't have an effective way to bring that information in a manner that, that they feel acceptable. That there can be collected by into new something forward. We will continue to kick the can down the road and not be able to execute on these plans. So there has to be a way, uh, in regards to kind of how we interact, how we present information to. Figure out how to develop a consensus to move something forward. So we can have progress. Cause I am very progress driven. So if I'm bringing something back, I want to make progress. I, I need to know what that needs to look like moving forward so I can be definitive. Absolutely.
Well, I'm progress driven. Not that the same conversation Mr. Compliment I had. Does admit that this thing you described. To look at all the tasks you're assigned to do and identify those that are most critical. Focus on getting them done as some managerial function. Now it's our job to provide you with the funding and direction to do it, but it's your job. Can I identify what they are? And you come back and you identify to the commission, I have the capacity, I don't have the capacity, I have this team. And we, we give you the proper resources to accomplish it. And we explain to the world why we didn't. But I think that's a management function in tandem with the policy centers. This is what needs to be done. Putting out the hottest fire first. And those decisions are made daily, whether it be private sector or public sector. That's my position on it. We can do it within your department, get your relevant influence. You identify what needs to be done, but you need to get that from the commission. Say, I need these resources.
Commissioner, to that point, would? Would the commission find an appropriate outcome tomorrow to say, now that there's a plan in place, we would like to see. Managerial, the prioritization that you have, so that we can appropriately fund what's most important. Would that be a, a valuable help?
I think, yes, but you'd have to go a little further. There are things that would be identified in the plan that may. Be rise to a level, higher level of priority. So we'd want to put it in here, you know, to basically say. We're going, you know, for instance, we didn't, we didn't have in here on goal seven, create a DMO. So I think that's something that has to be added in there, you know. Um, investigate, I mean, we're gonna investigate how to do it. And then we've got to say, and do it.
Right. Knowing.
We don't know exactly what it is, but we know that we might want to do it. And so. We need to just say that that's the action, that's the do part of it, you know? We know, we think we want to do it. I'm saying good thing because we haven't actually said so, but again, it's a great idea. But how do we get it from concept? To completion, to implementation. That's. What I hear you saying in the do part, that getting that, or those things kind of done. Just like when Dana was talking to you, you know, we said in here, we're gonna do some transportation improvement. We got a grant, we got this desperate activated thing, it's done, it's in.
Two things, knowing that you always reserve some capacity for the unexpected. No plan, folks themselves are 100%. Second thing is some of these are if then clauses, if we, if we get this money, then this can occur. So I understand there's two factors. Yeah. What I'm trying to get us to start to circle around is. Is. You've done a plan. In many cases. There's an element of executing the plan. And that could be a temptation tomorrow. To direct the staff, right, to execute the plan. Those are the, those are the strategies for the next two years, execute the plan. But I think I'm hearing is there's a desire for some degree of what? Is most important in the commission's mind in executing those plans?
Sure.
Is that a fair statement? Yes, yeah, maybe I'm looking at city staff too as well. I'm sitting here, Joe, I want a sense of, yes, I have a plan and that plan has 10 different items on it. And I can share with you, commission, what those items are. And again, I'm not trying to rank order 10 items, but I'm trying to get a sense of. Within those, there are elements that are more important than others. It may be within the, it may be within the part of the, it may be for maintenance. I want you to prioritize the for maintenance over additional identification of plan. Great. Now we have direction and I can relatively prioritize and ideally. Over it. And put dollars in it. Is that a fair request as we calibrate our mission?
I think so. Yeah.
So I'm gonna say, I, I think I've watched a lot of commissions, other. Few other staff people that have been in our department for almost 10 years. Where we all get weird is generally squishy things like, go build me a red house. You want a red house? I'll build you. That's easy.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that I see, I don't have to deal with this as much, but my public department has to is. Build a strategy. That's squishy, that's not a red house. And so I just sometimes see people trying to figure out what a red, you know, what the strategy is. Would not want to come up with a plan or execute something that's very. You know, a lot of problems were solved. They're not easy. They were easy. Who would even talk about it? But so some of these are pretty tough to deal with. And then there's all these competing interests. Um, you have people generally commissioners. I'll take, uh, Commissioner Smith. Rocky's been here forever and some of us have moved here after we were wanting something. Rocky's lived here his entire life. Uh, I would never want to come in and have to work on a budget that was on Rocky's page. I say that's about history or art or tourism. You're gonna lose. Care about the way that Rocky does. And that's not, I mean, that's a great thing. That's great that we have commissioners who believe like that. But it is just sort of sitting and watching, not having to be in those shoes. You see this passion and love that Rocky has, and then you see people skipping into town like, hey, that'd be a great job. And they run into this problem, like you said, problems that have been unsolved for 10, 15 years. And you come in as a newcomer and it's somebody's, uh. Got a bad intention or a bad intent. It's real problem, real complex. And people who have strong opinions and all this history and stuff. So it's, it's. It is hard. I mean, it's, it's much harder than, um. Then I, I think, I guess what I'm getting at, this perspective, I think, I think needs to sort of be talked about when you're talking about what you're saying because. These are hard problems, the ones that go on forever. And I think it's because of these collision of all these. Different, I don't even call competing interests, just. Looking at the same thing from different lenses and histories and that stuff. If that makes any sense.
It's constant. And I think, um. It is, it is a statement of. We don't build strategy and I go back to the last two years seemed to have been very focused on building plans and calling strategies. And a lot of thought has been put into that. And now the question is how will we effectively execute those strategies, knowing that. So he said, correct me if I'm wrong, but. You probably can't afford to do every single thing on every single plan next year, the next two years. If I'm wrong, then I think we need to enter. But I'm not. So there needs to be some degree of prioritization. That helps any staff, I don't know what's gonna move those goals forward. That's all I'm trying to get us to do.
What has changed?
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, I've looked at, I've looked at what I'm gonna be doing. Relative to news. Everything that I'm looking at. The IT's executed plan, yeah, a lot of it is very high level, but there are things that I think, you know. Are completely different than what we thought of back then. Just because I'm coming out of a different viewpoint, a different concept, things are new.
I'll say this, it may be hard. It's true. And I'm giving a success story. At Public Works Hill. We solved a multitude of problems because we put our mind to it. We saw opportunity and we moved on it. We knew we wanted to get out of Center Street and make that a more livable area. We knew the city was gonna expand along the perimeter. We saw the opportunity to buy a centralized piece of property that was suffice well. And we moved on it and we worked on it and we kept a gun on it and we did, we made sure we didn't build a Taj Mahal, people say. And we came out with a success story. So it's true. Maybe it's only doable now and then, but it's true.
And even those, we don't like it to take 10 years and they didn't take 10 years and wouldn't have got those exact. Results. I mean, like library, we thought about that for so many years and what it still looked like. But in the end, we got the perfect library and then the other we got. Uh, you see, you know, they say, well, something, why just the shelves? Well, and that speaks to something that what Jim was talking about. I'm, I'm, thank you, Jim, for bringing this up. And, um. I know the department has sometimes feel like, I will tell you, the library building we have, we're so great.
I don't need perfect. I mean, I, what I need is perfect. I mean, it was the perfect.
Okay.
But between the choices of up on the hill, where the site was, was the perfect site. It's the perfect.
I don't.
This of all the things that we talked about from generator.
It was a little best conclusion at the time. I think experience, sometimes I feel that, you know, after six or seven years, you know, experience starts to tell about, okay. You know, history provides you the opportunity to look back and say, did these projections work out? Did those assumptions, did those actions play out? I think it's difficult sometimes for staff to be able to say, eh, no, that might not have been the right, you know, the right call. Or, you know, it didn't turn out that we wanted it to. And now I have to come back to you and, and, you know, talk about this. And then those can be really difficult conversations because that. Again, from my little world, you know, our, our library building is, is. It, it, I know the building is too small.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying too, like in terms of the library and like Public Works. If we would have built, um, Public Works at Mount Pleasant. That would have been a horrible decision. Um, and we almost did it. If we would have built a library and a ballpark site, that would have been a disastrous decision and we almost did it. And, um, I mean, so what I'm saying is. In the reality of all of the things, and, um, we got the right choice, right, for the community. Um, and, and so, yes, sometimes kicking the can down unfortunately gets us messed up.
Right. And the obligation of resources. And so what I'm trying to say is tomorrow. The temptation will be. Let's go execute a plan. Check. That's, that's our community mission.
That's not enough.
That's not enough. And it's hard. I agree. And I don't expect us to land in every single item. But as a commission, you have the opportunity to represent the community and say, this is what we can do. To move this concept forward, to move this thing forward. And the staff will benefit from that because they'll have some, so. For allocate resources overall and the city will be the better for it. I'm not trying to follow a like rose colored glasses picture of progress. Oh. I just don't end up with. We'll do it. Great. Eight hours later, we're done. Let me just run one thing by you as we head into, uh, tomorrow. One of the things that we've been implementing for your goals, um, for the last two years is to try to understand what the. Themes we were hearing were. And I don't think any of yours should be shocking to you, but instead of saying. What is this goal mean now? And what we wanted to understand what thematically we're identifying as being important for our city going forward. And so the items on the list should look very familiar because they're effectively what your goals are stating. Our proposal for tomorrow is that these eight items serve as the basis of our smaller conversations tomorrow. I realize I'm asking you this in the last 15 minutes, but it is our ramp up piece. Is there any addition, subtraction, feedback, comments, questions as you look for this list? That lead you to think we should take a different approach tomorrow? I'll give you a minute of oxygen. We don't want to add a bullet just by two or five. Energy was.
I, I don't want to give them, I don't want to give them any, any more props than they actually have. That's the unspoken.
But I mean, I, I break that up once you can just, but I think that this, that, that's an example of. When we look at what our goals were and what we agreed we were gonna do two years ago, and when we talked about capacity and, you know, nimbleness and what that. I just, I hope we do right then. That's why I think really that what we accomplished was. You know, don't let that I two or five, looking at just the environmental assessment, which is.
That wasn't the pages.
Yeah. It's. It's amazing how much staff have taken, right, for implementing the sidewalk plan. Uh, for the pop, pop sidewalk, it's written right down on the naughty list. And all of a sudden, you have everything I've dropped to do that. Or maybe that's part of what we talk about here is just we like to appreciate that. And I hope you realize some of these are delay and kind of. Redirecting resources, whether that be the program that came in, um. You know, different, uh. I mean, things it just took a little bit longer to get the public process that we're going to, I mean. So we have to try to build that capacity and at the same time, you know. And planning is, is three people. Like. By Saturday 11, you know, 20%, which is, it's just, it's not possible. We're, what the staffing level to rent, so these departments. From planners, official planners. So I say that just in terms of what we're thinking through, that we have a discussion about. What do we want to see in the projects? And, you know, how can we define that if it's new?
Well, Tony, the I two or five tolling to me comes under the infrastructure. Because if it happens, it will obviously, as we've already stated, substantially impact our infrastructure. So it, it is a separate category, but I mean, again, I think there was enough flexibility built into the goals. That if we had to pivot to something that was. And I'll say I two or five, in my opinion, is. Is threatening our, our vision and our mission statement. In, in the long run. And so. I think if you look at it on a broader lens, it really did fit under there. And it was something that was. Critical at the time because again, if we didn't respond. Then we're left out and we don't have a voice at that table. And that was important, not only to. You know, the structure of our community, but the livability of our community. I mean, it, it hits so many of these goals. Unintentionally, but it does. And so it really is something that, you know, we have to be able to build into this process, which we did before. That if something like that happens, you know. And we have to do that. We have to make that, that swing over here to, to, to deal with this, I'll call it an imminent threat. Uh, to address it because it affects everything. It affects everything that we're trying to do. And it could, it could all go away if this happens. So it was important for us to, you know, to delay some things because this was. Really kind of. The gorilla in the room and it still is.
Working prioritized, where it's how to prioritize tomorrow. Should not lock you in for the next two years if something like that happens. It should give clarity. It should give a letter of review. It should give information to staff and it should move the city forward. But it shouldn't be two years from now, Commissioner Miles, we. Well, let's come back in two years and see how. But we need to, and I'm, I want to know that. So my response to that, uh, tactically is. We're not doing four groups at a time, eight groups at a time, we're doing two groups at a time. Which means half of you, more of us, will be involved in one topic or another at any given time. Our hope is that that will provide enough perspectives on things like tolling, on things like additional appropriations that may or may not be coming. In order to hopefully prioritize against the thing we're talking about at any given time. So that's trying to mitigate its backlash. In that regard, it's not even perfect, but it's an attempt at that. So we've asked, uh, Tony to help us start to review innocent groups tomorrow. That's everyone around the table, these, based on these themes. We try to make themes that, you know, that won't be interest by certain individuals, invoke at the same time. Not that you get it perfect, so there may be some element of heat and so on. He got it.
Right.
perfect, so there may be some element if he meets himself, and he got it, right, that plus, that plus starts then, I will, I will do people that, okay. That is, that is the means, but, so I heard, yeah, strategy. So there's, um, there's an element of that tomorrow, and that is, so you have a meeting to sleep on this, I'm sure you'll be going to bed and wake up thinking about hell out of you. If you don't, you'll spend the morning in the firm, hopefully, snacking babies.
Just what it is late in your, you know, retirement. Um, whenever I see couple bullet points, I always think about whether the couple, parts of the company actually fit together, most of the, like, they go together. Can you, what was the thought between partnerships and strong community identity? I'm not sure. I see that.
Yeah.
I saw those were part of the same, I think.
Yeah, there was an element, so goal seven specifically puts those two together, uh, supporting strong partnerships that contribute to all of that, you know, and, you know, base our community identity. So we were just responding to what had already been a bit of a combination. If there is a bias one way or another on that, that would be for you to decide. If, you know, well, bias often, I don't know if you see the answer, I think you'll have to decide. That theme still holds when you walk away. And it doesn't happen. You can sit there and say, most of the things say that this is really the pillar of our strategy, it's going to be around something that is close but not those ways. That's your policy to go. We have a lot more to say around tactics and how we do this in the morning, but I'm going to start here, you bring us the name of that, so.
I, I guess I've got a concern about the first housing, and you kind of need to ask your, well, this, we're, next week, we're meeting with planning commission, and we're talking about middle housing. Do we know enough about what the state is going to be requiring of us to think about putting together diverse housing plans, and all of a sudden, we may put together our plan in the state, which has been, and we wasted two years' worth of effort?
Um, we don't know, and I don't know what the state's going to do. But I think the questions that we're going to ask, we can still talk about. Like, there are questions about, um, are there different zoning, land use things we want to do that would incentivize affordability? Um, so we want to allow multiple ADUs, like, there, there are things that we can still talk about. The idea was, um, to identify potential work plan items, and maybe identify something we might want to research, to do at the end of the session.
And we'll probably know by, in June or July, I don't know.
They're hoping to pass the bill mid this month, so.
Yeah, like, it's, it's DJ, it's active, it's, and I'll see you today.
So without, they're saying something that's in there, that's the exact kind of conversation, you want to make sure you're empowered to help tomorrow by having the staff and the commission together in these conversations, so that you can still move some things forward, even though the absence of a commission holds. Okay. This is where we will start to pick up tomorrow. We will have more to say on process and how to actually go about this. But tomorrow will be the day of idea generation, of execution, of action identification and partnership between staff and the commission, uh, just to prepare you for what tomorrow will be. For the last five minutes, what? Comments, questions, thoughts, nomination opinions, conjecture, or what? You have to, or not.
Like, they add a veggie line, I have inverse potential works and charges, but I might have to go down to Salem and burn it down, and start gathering, you know, that.
A few words, so. I'm hearing the season's, right, for me, which is.
I guess I would say, having been through, I'm going to get through this years, I think there was one in the lot, a lot on there, and two, hoping that we can discuss a little more, so clarity, certainty, expectations of the commission, and we can have those discussions of what, how realistic those are, based on staffing and performance. And we're going to turn it over, man, half the, because we can, yeah, of course, we can, yeah, we can respond to this.
Yeah.
So then you all speak higher.
Pearl starts at eight for breakfast, especially when we get.
Good, thanks, everybody.
They're all for the audience tomorrow, and it's that.
They're, 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 they're,